Let's call the meeting to order, starting with the introductions to my left.
Dan Godak.
Mike Fournier.
Mayor of Royal Oak.
Ann Vara.
Tim Twing, Community Valum Director.
Eric Cluister.
And we have a quorum. Second Order of Business is the approval of the minutes for the September 12, 2017 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Godak, support?
Support.
Support by Mayor Fournier, any discussion on the minutes? Not seeing all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Item number C is Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. If there are anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a non-agenda item. Okay, not seeing. We'll close the public comment on non-agenda items, and then we're going to move to item D under Old Business. This is a zoning ordinance text amendment for preservation and replacement of existing trees. Mr. Twing.
This item was in front of the Planning Commission on two prior occasions. First, when the draft language was presented, I believe in August or July. Actually, the Planning Commission actually held a public hearing on it at your September meeting. You postponed action on it, looking for some wordsmithing to Section D, which had to deal with exemptions. Staff took that back and has drafted some language that's a little bit different than what you expressed in September, and it's back in front of you this evening for further discussion and/or action. What I would point out was the... What you were looking for when you wanted to grant exemptions from the requirement to preserve or install additional trees was guidance, but also a less stringent requirement than what staff had originally put in. So you'll see the revised wording in red, basically just indicating that if the Planning Commission determines there are unique or exceptional conditions of the property that preclude the strict application of the regulations, you can determine that it's not necessary to comply. So that's the wordsmithing language we stuck in versus what was much more restrictive. If you're happy with that, there is a resolution as part of the packet that would forward this to the City Commission for its consideration as an ordinance amendment.
Okay, is the resolution... Is that on the top of page two? Or why am I not seeing?
Starts at the bottom of page two with whereases.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Twing? Mr. Godak?
I may be looking at the wrong link, but all the text amendments I'm seeing here are highlighted in yellow. I don't see... You mentioned something in red. Can you tell me what page that's on?
Being right in the front.
Under D?
Right there. Oh, okay. So just that one particular line?
Yep, that's all we were looking. I believe that's all the concern the Planning Commission had last time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Twing? Would anybody care to... Do we make a motion, or is it make a motion for a resolution?
Yep, this is a recommendation. Make a motion to approve or recommend to the City Commission that they adopt this ordinance.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to recommend and approve this resolution to the City Commission.
Okay, motion by Mr. Godak, support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Cluister, any discussion on this?
I'll just add that.
Yeah, I think this is another strategic move that we're putting in place here as far as a recommendation to the City Commission, where we're looking to do everything possible at every moment possible to preserve our tree canopy in this city. So it's a fine step in the right direction.
I too agree. I think this is a great move. I've been in Royal Oak for a little over 20 years now, and I do a lot of walking, and it's very sad to see a lot of our street trees starting to crumble away, and a lot of them are silver maples. Of course, we lost our ash trees, so anything we can do to help revive that, I think, is a good thing, and it sounds like a reasonable solution, so. Without seeing any further discussion, I'll call for the votes. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? It's on to the City Commission. Would it be at the next meeting, Tim?
Probably the one after it.
Okay, and do you notice that?
No, there is no requirement for a public notice at the City Commission.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, on to New Business. This is a public hearing, and it's rezoning from Mixed Use Two to Planned Unit Development, which is a PUD and Final Site Plan SP 17-10-24. It's to construct a three-story, 36-foot building with 26 multiple-family dwelling units and ground-level parking spaces. This is Urbain on Harrison, onsite off-street parking lot at southwest corner of the South Washington and West Harrison. Mr. Twing.
Briefly, the Planning Commission did approve the preliminary PUD for this site at your August 8 meeting. What's in front of you this evening is the requirement that they resubmit for final approval within six months of that approval. So they're here tonight to ask for your final action on the PUD. This is a rezoning, so it will, with your recommendation, be forwarded to the City Commission for their action as a change to the zoning map. At the August meeting, I believe the Planning Commission really had three items that you wanted them to address in specific. One had to do with the facade along South Washington, and rather than having grates, because this building is a stilted building with parking underneath and units above, rather than having the mesh grates, they've now gone to a spandrel-type glass, which makes the building look entirely residential from top to bottom along Washington. The other... One of the other items was in regards to the public alley to the west of the site, and was there an opportunity to widen that alley to facilitate better two-way movement? Upon further inspection, utility poles and things that are in the way would really preclude making it much wider than the current alley width, which is 18 feet. So they have not altered that, and planning and engineering are in agreement with them in terms of the overhead utility poles would have to come out and be buried. The third item had to do with providing screening from headlights leaving the site because they're an apartment building to the west. The only points where vehicle headlights leaving the site should be an issue looking at it is the drivelines, where those drivelines are at. There are no windows on the first floor of the building to the west. You'll see in the pictures, there's basement units, but those are in the center of the building. So looking at it from a standpoint, and then the only place to put any sort of screening would be on the west side of the alley in close proximity to the property line for the apartment building. Given those reasons, the petitioner and staff are suggesting that that may not be something you want to require, or would have to look at further. Other than that, those are the three things that you ask them to address and modify from the prior plan. All of the other contingencies that are listed on pages three of four in our report are pretty much the same. As you indicated, there are 26 units being proposed. There are 36 off-street parking spaces proposed into the building. It is some approximately 36-feet heights to the top of the roof, and then the various setback placements are as indicated in there. I guess I'll stop with that as my report or update.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Twing on this one? Not seeing us here from the petitioner. Would you like to present your revised plan?
Gabe Rubin from Selective Acquisition Development Company, and Mark Abanatha from Alexander Bogartson Associates. Thank you for taking another look at our project. We feel that since the last Planning Commission meeting, after you've addressed some of your recommendations, we feel that we have prepared and provided an excellent revision, and it's just a very sleek, modern-looking building that I think is going to add tremendous value to the Washington Avenue corridor.
Good evening. Mark Abanatha with Alexander Bogartson, the architects for the project. As Gabe mentioned, after the Planning Commission gave its comments last time, we went back and took a look as a group at the elevation and looked at what we could do to bring that human scale and that detailing down to the street level. And as Tim mentioned, we carried the glass detailing. We actually brought the sunscreens down on this corner and then carried that glass down on this side as well, so we brought a lot of prominence to the corner. And then the glazing pattern that's above it, we carried that on down as well. There was also some discussion about not really having what appeared to be a frontage or an entrance on that street, being that Washington's going to set a precedent for future other development in having that human scale in the entrance. So we've developed a detail, canopy detail, and door and/or spandrel there. It's faux, but it's going to give that look of an entrance on the side of the building. So we think that this glazing detailing, following the pattern above and how it relates to the entire first floor and that human scale, I think it was and is a really good improvement to the building, and I think that it was all good suggestions, and I think we've got a better-looking building as a result of it. So we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, but at this point in time, that's our presentation for the evening.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Casada?
If I remember last time, those where you've placed the glazing over the openings facing Washington, those were open before.
Correct, yeah. If this entire side here was this similar detail where we have a grid or a grill system...
And that hasn't changed. The north side hasn't changed.
No, that carried across here, correct.
So you've added... Yeah, you've added the glazing. I guess one of my questions is, is it the same glass, or is it a different glass? Is it a smoked glass? Tell us about it.
It's basically going to be a similar glass to the glass that's above. The only difference is you can't see through it, so the glass itself will be the same.
Okay, so there is some sort of a film or screen on it?
Yes, correct.
Does that have any effect on the requirements for an indoor parking area? You know, you've blocked this off now, and indeed, we've asked you to do something with it, but now that you've blocked it off, is there adequate airflow in there for the folks bringing their cars in there?
There will be as part of the overall design. We have openings on the north side and on the west side, but we'll also provide mechanical ventilation to move that air through, and that'll be on a timer and a sensor to clear that out.
Okay, and is that an add to this design?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's one of the trade-offs of closing the front up and glazing it. But we think it's a worthwhile.
Do you know what side of the building the exhaust will be on?
It should be on... As far as I know, it's going to be over on the west side.
Going to be on the alleyway?
On the alley side, correct.
Okay, well, have you determined where on the alleyway it's going to be?
We're thinking back towards the southwest portion of that wall.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Godak?
I'll save my comments till after public comment.
Okay. Any other questions for the petitioner? Okay, not seeing. We're going to open the public hearings. If you could have a seat. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to comment on this proposal? Yes, sir. I should... I'll let people know that the public comment is three minutes, so each person that comes to the microphone does have that three minutes. Thank you. Could I just have your name for the record, sir?
My name is Harry Javens. I'm the owner of the building to the west of this proposed development on the other side of the alley. I spoke at the last meeting, expressing some concerns about parking in particular. The 1.38 spaces per unit is almost surely going to result in overflow onto the streets where there is already heavy contention for what limited parking there is there, especially with one side of Harrison being blocked from parking at all. So it leaves just one side of the street, and so it's a contentious situation at best, and could, in fact, have an economic impact on my building because people, knowing that they will have to maybe walk a city block or more to get to parking, considering my building for rental, is bound to have a negative impact on their decision. The thing that hasn't come up again in this hearing that I've heard has to do with what is proposed as a rooftop activities area. I'm very much opposed to that. My building had a hatch available that was... That led to the roof, and my tenants discovered that and were using the roof for various activities, let's say. And things were happening such as debris and bottles and so forth being thrown from the roof, a great deal of noise that the neighbors complained of. It just wasn't a good... Not to mention the damage that was done to the roof itself, but that's because of the roof wasn't designed to be walked on. So I, of course, locked the hatch after that point, and so there was no more parties or whatever going on on the roof. The... I just heard that this... The exhaust, from exhaust fumes, is going to be once again directed at my building, just like the headlights, and all this activity in the alley now that's beside the building, which is another factor of the potential use of the rooftop for parties and so forth. I have serious-minded tenants in my building. The people that are currently running there, that are on that side of the building, the east side of the building that would be facing this development, are a couple of registered nurses who work rotating shifts, and, you know, the idea of having parties going on next door to who knows when. I don't know that any limitation has been put on the hours of when those parties might take place, or when...
Sir, it's been three minutes?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, yes, sir. Your name for the record?
Yeah, my name is Tony Snow. I live at 343 West Harrison. I own the building there. It's a seven-unit townhouse building. I live in the corner unit. I, like Harry, have a couple of concerns, and one of them is the parking. I think everybody knows that Royal Oak has a parking problem, and we don't want to create more problems as we develop. I think that's a pretty fair statement. And the 1.4, I figured out I didn't get as technical as Harry, 1.38, 1.4 spots for 26 units is not a lot, and Harry is absolutely correct. Harrison on the south side is the only side of the street you can park on, and that gets to be pretty crowded at night. If you don't believe me, drive by tonight, and you'll see cars parked all the way down the street. And now we're going to have another unit. I think the development's awesome. You know, I wholeheartedly agree with development of the city, and, you know, units like this, they make my building more valuable. I think it's great, but I think we have to really pay attention to some of the issues that's, you know, troubling Royal Oak right now, and that's... One of them is parking. The other issue I had with them, and I discussed it with the gentleman after the last meeting, is that rooftop terrace. I don't know if any of you have experience with other rooftop terraces. I know one of the council people last week said that she didn't have a problem with the top terrace, but two of us expressed concern on that. And I think the council should take a look at that and say, listen, let's step back a second and see if that's going to interrupt this neighborhood, because there are a number of houses on this street, not just apartments. And, you know, I don't want to live next door to a party house. And when people get on roofs, it seems like... I was 25 once. I know my kids never believe me, but I used to party pretty hard, and I know these young professionals. And, you know, when they get up on, you know, the free air and above the roof, they think they can't be heard, but actually, they can be heard even more. So two concerns, the parking and the rooftop terrace. So I appreciate if you would take a second look at those. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Planning Commission for discussion. For the questions, Mr. Godak.
I'd like to first comment about the glass over the parking structure on Washington Avenue. I really like it. I'm glad you guys chose that type of method to carry that feature down to eye level. That was one of my big problems with this and with other developments on our main streets, is that we tend to look at parking on these structures that are first-floor parking. So hats off to that. I think you guys did a good job with that. That's one of the things I was really pushing for, and I think if other developers look at this type of facade for covering our parking, I think this is a good example. There... I did have some questions prior, when you were up here last time, about the rooftop, and one of the things that kind of calmed me down was that there was some spacing. I don't know if we can look at like a top-down view of what the rooftop would look like, that people wouldn't be able to walk directly up to the edge of the roof. There was... It was kind of cordoned off a little bit. Can you speak to that and how that's laid out?
Tim, if you could go to the second floor level?
That one?
Uh, no.
Or this one?
Third floor. Third floor, I'm sorry, yeah, second living. Yes. If you look at it, you can see a box, dashed box area, correct. That area is the area for the rooftop, so it's quite a ways interior to the roof itself. We also talked about at the edge of the facade up at the roof, there's a parapet. So your sight lines from anywhere, you're never going to see that space because it's so far inboard. We also talked about the mechanical units over the top of the corridor, the same thing. And so from the standpoint of visually being able to see that and having whatever activity up there is more central to the core of the building. The developers, after that meeting, and the commission's concern about the rooftop and rooftop activities, as they expressed at the meeting, and I agree, it's a great amenity. We're going to have space down at that second floor, which is terrace area, that's in that courtyard, as well as up at the rooftop. But they are going to monitor that, and that will be closed down at a reasonable hour in the evening, and it'll only be accessed by the residents via key card out to that space. So the idea of having parties going on at all hours of the night up there, that's not what's going to happen. Urbain is going to manage the building. It's going to be a wonderful building and a wonderful addition to the community, and their goal is to have something that's great for the residents, good outdoor space for the residents, but also to respect the neighbors and the community at large.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for the petitioner, or Mr. Twing even? Okay.
I guess I got one more.
Mr. Casada?
Yes. You asked for the petitioner. Last time, we had a little comment between myself and Commissioner Douglas about the open parking, and you've addressed that, but I have to tell you something. Based on Commissioner Douglas's comments, I went out and I started looking at some of the facilities that had parking on the first floor. There's LA Fitness, and there's some condos up on 11 Mile, and there are others. And one of the things that really struck me was during the day, they weren't so bad, but at night, the lights inside the parking were totally obnoxious. They were spraying out of the building. They were too bright. They weren't controlled. They were different colors. And so I just want to make the comment that even though you've put a facade on the Washington side, I would hope that our codes and our ordinances in terms of lighting would not only be met, but some sensitivity to how light is going to behave inside and spraying out on the building next to you, the building to your west. If you don't study that lighting, and you know this, if you don't study that lighting, it can look terrible, and it can be a nuisance.
We'll take that under consideration when we look at the lighting.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Is there a motion?
Again, this is a recommendation to the City Commission as a rezoning. It would go to the City Commission with that. If you were recommending approval, the City Commission would have two readings of the ordinance, so.
Mr. Godak?
I'll move the rezoning from Mixed Use Two to PUD and Preliminary Site Plan SP 170820.
Motion by Mr. Godak, is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Casada. Any discussion? Mr. Casada?
Just a comment. One of the issues that was brought up last time was not... And it was in the report, is that the, you know, when cars come out of the parking lot, there's windows on the building next door, and that the, you know, there was a lot of concern that those lights would go right in the window. Well, I went out to the site, it's actually right across from my office, and I pasted off, and indeed, as what it says in the report, the exit and entrance do not line up with the windows. There's 19 feet from the sidewalk, then there's a 22-foot opening, then there's another 19-foot of building, and in that 19 feet is where five of the six windows are. There are six windows there. Five of them are within the area that don't line up. One of the windows, this is for the information for the commission, one of the windows does line up. One of the windows will... A single window will end up getting... If anybody goes out that way, the light's going to shine right in it, and there isn't really no way to screen it, as far as I can tell. I also think, though, that any exiting onto the alley is going to have the same problem, because even if you move the entrances farther away, people also turn when they come out of the parking deck, so there's almost no way, if you're going to have any traffic on that alley at all from this building, sometimes the light's going to go in the window. And I considered that. I don't know if there's anything that can really be done about it, except exit in a less convenient place. So I just let my fellow commissioners know I looked at that.
Okay, is a motion on the table? Is there any more discussion? Not seeing. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Madam Chair, I abstain.
Oh.
Because I wasn't here for the entire discussion.
Okay, so two, three, four, five, and then one abstention.
Yeah, but she influenced it.
I thought so, too.
I didn't say a word.
But we've got a nice covered parking area now. Okay, so this will be going out of this commission.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, under New Business, item two, SP 170925, Site Plan to Demolish an Existing Restaurant. Tim, this is not a public hearing?
No.
Okay, so we... That was our only public hearing? Correct?
Correct.
Okay. To demolish an existing restaurant, Tubby's, and construct five-unit, 6,500-square-foot commercial building for retail sales, carryout restaurants, and or other permitted uses at 1612 East 11 Mile Road. Mr. Twing?
As you indicated, this is a site plan for the redevelopment of an existing site. The petitioner is proposing to tear down the Tubby's Restaurant on East 11 Mile near Campbell and redevelop it with a plaza of about 6,500 square feet that they would then partition. partition off for uses that are permitted in the neighborhood business zoning district or zoning district for the site. They are proposing that there would be 23 parking spaces onsite along with those, that 6,500 square feet of, of floor area. Depending on the final unit mix, you'll see in our staff report that they could need variances from the zoning board of appeals. This is a little bit of a white box building. You will see that the lowest requirement would be 23. Based on analysis, probably the highest requirement would be to have 35. There is a connection between the sites. To the east is the gas station, and they have some additional parking to the south of it, but the site's being treated on its own. So, you'll see the staff's report. Item one is that the use of the building should be limited to permitted uses that are labeled in neighborhood business, and that any configuration of the floor plan for the final tenant use would have to comply with specific off-street parking requirements, or they'd be subject to applying to the zoning board of appeals for any necessary variances. We've given you some highlighted kind of breakdown there. Item two is in terms of direct vehicle access to the site, and the fact that there is currently planned to be a connection between the two parcels, the gas station and, and this plaza. Item three is in regards to the landscape plan. If the plan is sufficient to the planning commission, then you can bless it as submitted. If you determine that there's additional items that needed to be added or modified, we would ask you to identify that this evening. They are proposing to install nine new pear, deciduous pear trees, along with some 40 other shrubs. There are no trees on the site that are currently being removed. Item four is in regards to the refuge requirement. They're proposing to use the existing dumpster enclosure to the east on the gas station site, as depicted in the corner of the site plan. Item five and six are standard contingencies regarding work in the public right-of-way and lighting. Item seven is also somewhat of a standard contingency regarding signage. However, what I would point out here, the design of the building and the facade has some of the cornices or that pop up, and a lot of times what we see is signs later wanting to be put on those, and then they're required to come back and get a, or they're not required, but they often come back and want to sign variance for putting signs above the roof line. That's a factor of the design a little bit. The way the sign ordinance is written, you can't have a sign above the roof. Also, it's, item seven is the removal of the existing non-conforming freestanding sign. Item eight and nine are, are standard requirements for posting bonds and complying with all other city building and engineering codes. That's all I have.
Is that it? Okay. Any questions for Mr. Twing? Mr. Goddick?
You may have covered this in past planning commissions, Mr. Twing, but what triggers this to be something that comes in front of us and that, that you, your department can handle administratively?
Well, generally, there's a size of the building being proposed, or occasionally, if it's the reusing an existing building, and they comply with everything, we might deal with it administratively. In this case, they're tearing down the existing facility, which is smaller, and they're building 6,500 square feet in a new site plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Twing? Okay, is the petitioner here? Hello, your name?
Hello, my name is Ziad Albabu, 4570, that's Wildwood, Detroit, Michigan. I'm the engineer representing the project. We have, as, as mentioned, that we are proposing a 6,500-square-feet plaza. We are tearing down the existing Tubby's, existing, and we have had some communication with planning, with Doug, back and forth about the parking, landscaping, the approach, the setback, all these issues, so at least we can come in into the board prepared as best as we can. Few things just to mention, we did provide as much landscaping as we can, buffer zones on both streets, the 11 Mile and the side street, Wilson. Also, the existing approach, we're going to narrow it down so it can comply with the city ordinance. The existing, as I mentioned, the existing Tubby's, which, which is about 1,600 square feet, is going to be removed. We did talk about the, sorry, something happening here. We did have some discussion about the dumpster enclosure and the, and also the, especially the use of the building. We, we did confirm there will be no convenience stores in the building, which is required additional parking. I mean, the owner owns the gas station, so it's not about a competition. He also has a store within the, the gas station. We did specify at the end that we're proposing two carryout, the very most, and, and three retail. We do understand if other uses come in, into the building that requires additional parking, they have to be, come here in front of the, the board for approval. And as we know, signage has been always a special permit, special, if they need variance, that's a different story. We're not recommending anything above the roof, of course. Rooftop units and all the items will be shielded, will be protective. You know, we usually put some screening around it, so at least we get some nice view from the building. We, we also, we were also proposing some, we did not put the building on a lot line in the back. We kind of pulled it away from that, so we can at least provide some room for, for any easements or any utilities that may come in in the picture, door swing, all this, so we can be protecting all these items. We, we do understand that the alley is a one-way alley, which is unusual, but it's, and we, as far as the site drainage, we have just finished a few projects with the city, one and 12 Mile, and even the gas station. We do understand the requirement of the drainage. We have met the engineer for both other two projects, and of course, we will comply with the city ordinance in regard, in regard to the drainage. All lighting, anything we propose on the site will be shielded down. Nothing is projected into the site. Very family-use building. We are providing mixed, on the building, mixed of brick, ephesus, and a crown. We did reduce, we were, we were taking the ephesus above the windows from the floor up. It's brick, so at least it's a mixed features on the building. And as, just to emphasize about the parking again, any additional u, any u's that requires additional parking, of course, we understand has to come in front of the board. We are looking for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for the petitioner? Ms. Douglas?
Sir, on the stretch of 11 Mile, all the buildings above the sidewalk, they come forward towards the sidewalk. Many will have parking next to the building, but still the buildings all are adjacent to the sidewalk. And here you have a circumstance where you could very easily put your building next to the sidewalk and put your parking in the back. Why did you choose not to do that?
I think the owner, he, he owns the gas station. See, one of the reasons is this Tubby's is blocking the entire view of the gas station coming in, you know, from west to east. That's, otherwise, we would, we would have kept the existing building and add to it. We had that study, that decision. We made some drawings based on that item. The other thing is, which is unusual, that alley in the back is actually a one-way alley. So, there is only traffic coming in one side. So, it's going to really affect, I mean, it's all about, of course, the prospective future outcome from the site. What would, what we would do if we pulled it to the front? And that's the first thing, actually, we had a discussion with the planning about the, the position of that building, because we, we understand. We've seen down the road. We understand our concept. See, that's why we presented the plans, that we are going to pull it back, so at least we have more view for the station. And of course, honestly, we don't have much use of the alley, because one-way traffic is just not, not beneficial for, it's not going to do any good. If we are there all day, barely anybody travels this alley. Alley, usually, it's a two-way traffic. It's inconvenient for the area. You get off the, the major road, so you can at least maneuver between side streets. The, here also, we're trying to make a cross connection between the gas station and the, and the, this building, so at least will be less traffic on, on, on 11 Mile, if they have to go into the gas station and the plaza and vice versa.
Okay, second question. You're choosing to use, you're proposing Bradford pear trees as part of your landscaping. Why did you choose those?
Well, it's, it's something we thought it will, I mean, we, we'll open for other recommendations. We can put the, you know, red maple, you know, any, any other kind of trees. That's, we can, we can do that. And if there's any condition, we can accept that. We were just trying to use something that we have done for the gas station, trying to impose the same concept, same trees, same thing. We are, we're open for that changes if it's recommended.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Mayor, if you have something next?
Yeah, just wanted to talk a little bit about the stormwater management drainage. Yes. You've commented that you're going to be compliant with our ordinance, which means are you going to be using a, you're going to be putting a detention facility underneath the parking lot?
Well, the, when we did the 12 Mile and Campbell, there's a plaza coming up, this, you know, we have approval, and the drawings will be in the city probably this week for permit. I am at with the engineering, and see the site, which is similar to this concept, the entire thing is, is pavement. So, physically, we're not adding any, in our perspective, we're not adding any storm water into the site, into the system, because we're actually reducing the amount of pavement on the site. We have a 10-foot and a 5-foot or 7-foot, you know, green belt, that will reduce the amount of water. Now, when we came into the 12 Mile, we mainly used the same concept, that we use the, it's a small site. I mean, the parking left is very small. So, what we did is, we used that green belt, the 10-foot, or maybe if we require, you know, oversight in the pipes or anything, to at least store this water. We understand what we can do. We actually, at this point, it's 100% water, 95% water going into the system. We are not going to send 95%. We maybe send maybe 15, 20%. We're storing the rest of it in a way or another, either inside the storm system, storm pipes, underground system, the landscaped areas any way possible. We will deal with the engineering. That's what we did.
So, what you're saying is you're reducing the amount of stormwater in two ways, through the pipes, as well as through the green belt, which is ultimately, we want all the water to go?
Oh, absolutely. We'd like to do that. Anything filters in there, anything, even with that amount that we're sending, maybe 15, 20% into the system. If you can reduce that, even better. Of course.
I think I just wanted to acknowledge that, you know, we are pushing on every project to make sure we reduce the impact, and this will be an improvement in the area. It's less water going into the storm system, which is helpful.
Sometimes even inside the, the 10-foot strip, we put this new system, it's the bio-retention bio-swell.
Yep, bio-swells, yeah.
Which is, filters the water within, which is very good.
Makes it cleaner.
Yes.
Mr. Casada?
Yes, I, as we mentioned a couple of times, this is a total tear down. You're tearing up the, the pavement. This is a total tear down and rebuild, right?
This is where we, we come in into, when it comes to engineering. The, the, what we did on the other project is, because we're maintaining the pavement, we're just, of course, at this sta, the next stage is, we're not letting the water shed 100% into the street. We're not going to let it shed like the way it is. Even if we kept some pavement, we will capture it. We will capture it as it goes down to 11 Mile with some sort of trenches or something, so we can store it. And it's going to go into the, there's a 10, there is a green belt on 11. It'll go into it. So, physically, whatsoever the next decision, when I meet with engineering, we're open to tear the whole thing down and put catch basins and, or whatever.
You, you're going to comply with the stormwater ordinance?
Absolutely. We have done that before.
Now, the other, the other question I have here, I mean, this is, you're tearing everything down, you're building it back up, and you're putting a, a much bigger building here.
Yes.
Yes? The majority of this project, to me, is the building, even though the site is significant, it's a, it's a, it's an architectural project, and you, you don't have hardly any architectural information on these plans. So, it's given me a little bit of concern. Who is your architect?
No, we do that in-house, like we've, we've done the, the other projects.
Okay, well, you haven't, I don't know what other projects. This is a total tear down and a rebuild, and I would have expected to see, see some more information, description. I, I, I have some problem with, with the amount of information you have. Are you saying you don't have an architect involved?
No, we, we do, we do. It's, it's now, it's, it's like a, it's a white box building. There's nothing special inside. We're not doing any partitions, anything inside. It's a white box, block and, you know, ephesus and brick. And then inside, it's a future, future partitions, future bathrooms, and of course, the doors and windows. I mean, this is what we're trying to do, and we're trying to make the, the, the front elevation, of course, very, very attractive.
And that's what I can't, I can't tell, quite frankly. I mean, it, it doesn't look attractive to me, but that's just a matter of taste, but it would be better if we had some more information. And, and you're saying you're going to do the architecture in-house? You have a licensed architect?
No, but we, we do, I'm an engineer. I'm, of course, for Michigan, we qualified, we do that. It's insurance issue also, to build up the insurance inside the, the office. But it's, it's, we, you know, it, it's, there's nothing much, like too much, too much materials, too much complex. We're doing the, of course, the crown, the, the ephesus crown, stucco, and then we got the brick all the way down, and we have some those, you know, these columns that they stick onto the wall, which is, you know, just a given, a little, you know, Roman enhancement to the building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Twing, I have a question about the style of the building, the look of the building. That's not for this body to comment on or object to, is that, who, who reviews that? Because I'm, I'm looking at a face of a building that I quite find unattractive, and I'm just, is this something that we want, the style in Royal Oak, or is this, I mean, who, who looks at this?
You don't have, I mean, you don't have architectural review standards in, in the sense of, of, if that's what you're asking. If there's a design feature that you believe doesn't comply with some particular code issue, or you believe generates some issue that you want to mitigate, you can just, as part of your site plan approval, make it a condition to, to modify it. But if you're talking architectural design standards, Royal Oak doesn't have those. We don't, we don't have color palettes. Royal Oak doesn't have material palettes.
Okay.
So, no one is reviewing colors.
What about material, building materials?
Again, I think things like ephesus, the planning commission has looked at, and on occasions where it's, someone has proposed putting it on ground or at grade, where it tends to deteriorate, you've part, as part of your approval, required brick or stone or something else to be the first few feet. They're proposing brick, I believe, here on, on their plans for the, for the majority of the lower level.
those. We don't, we don't have color palettes. Royal Oak doesn't have material palettes. So no one is reviewing colors.
What about material, building materials?
Again, I think things like ephesus, the planning commission has looked at, and on occasions where it's, someone has proposed putting it on ground, or at grade, where it tends to deteriorate, you've, as part of your approval, required brick or stone or something else to be the first few feet. They're proposing brick, I believe, here on their plans for the majority of the lower level.
Is he required to have an architect for these plans? Is that something that you would review in-house? Should this be approved?
Well, from a site plan, this body's approval, you can either have the sealed drawings from the engineer or the architect. When they get into building code submissions, or engineering code submissions, then they'll have to have the appropriate seals on those plans.
Okay.
What we'll do is mirror that, make sure that those plans are still consistent with what you've blessed.
Okay. Mr. Goddick?
As we decide on these site plans, Mr. Twing, don't, don't we have the criteria that, you know, like the template criteria that it meets?
Well, it's not, doesn't negatively impact the surroundings. It's got, you've got some criteria to look at, in terms of if you impose something that's not a specific ordinance standard, why are you doing so?
That's kind of what I wanted to reference, once we were done with the presentation here, but I'll go into that now, is I agree with the earlier comments about, that Commissioner Douglas had about the setback. There's a group of commercial people that got together on 11 Mile called 11 Mile Has It All, and there is a consistent setback that's pretty tight to the street, all along 11 Mile, and it kind of makes it what it is. And to me, this site plan doesn't fit within what I would say is beneficial to the surrounding business. And I could cite some things from the master plan as to why I won't be supporting it. That usually comes out in the eight-point criteria that I can usually reference, that sometimes it gets printed at the bottom of some of these.
Well, this is not a special land use, that I confuse it to. It's not those same criteria where it's, you know, harmonious, and things that you've got to deal with when you're dealing with a special land use. That's not the case here.
Is there any criteria that I can use? And I know that was kind of asked and answered as far as how it fits within, within the surrounding setbacks. I know, as far as the, the specific features of the facade of the building, whether it's appealing to one person or not, there's ephesus on the structure, there doesn't seem to be much effort into making this fit within the area it's being put in. And I guess if we don't have criteria to do something like this, this is probably something that, as we look at the master plan coming forward, that we should be able to have a hammer to hit this with very hard, because it's being put in the wrong spot and it looks bad. So if I can't hammer it, I sure want to. And that's not to take anything away from what you're trying to do with the site. The site does need to be improved. The parking lots score up. I don't see a reason for an alley there. I'd rather see the alley vacated. And I don't also see a reason why, we should be able to treat this site individually. We really, we understand that the gas station owner owns this property, but it's being developed on its own, so if there's traffic that goes in between it, I don't think that's particularly appropriate, because I thought I heard at the beginning of this presentation that we're treating this as its own site. So with that, I'll stop.
Any other questions, comments, Mr. Casada?
No questions. I didn't know if we're on debate yet, or we're still asking questions.
Still asking questions, there's no motion?
Then I'll stand down.
I have concerns, too. I agree with Ms. Douglas. I think we find something where we could, I'm sensitive to the plans that we approve for our Royal Oak, and this, the look and feel of this doesn't seem to fit for me. And I won't support this because of that. I just want to make sure, Mr. Twing, that we are abiding by the planning code that we're charged to do in doing so. So that's what I'm looking for.
I would suggest very, that if you're recommending against it, you'd be very succinct in why and the reasons for why you're voting against it.
We will.
Okay. Those are my comments. Any other comments or questions? We need a moment to look over the...
Public comment, or not?
No, no public comment.
Can I?
Mr. Goddick?
Could I ask Mr. Twing, or even our city attorney, to comment about Royal Oak Code 770-12, Site Plan 3C, where the proposed use will not be injurious to the surrounding neighborhood and protects the general health, safety, welfare, and character of the city?
But that's the use, not the...
The proposed use.
May I pipe up at this point, can I?
Mr. Casada?
770-30B1, Architectural Character, New Buildings and Expansion and/or Alteration of Existing Buildings in or Adjacent to Existing Developed Areas Shall Be Compatible and With and/or Enhance the Established Architectural Character of Such Areas by Using a Design That Is Complimentary. So I do think that the statute provides a standard that, while we don't get to pick colors, and I'm not saying we do, but it's something to consider, and I think we could base a decision on it. That's not the basis of my not supporting it. My basis not supporting is, I don't think that you can determine whether the use will not be injurious without competent architectural information, which we don't have, because they don't have an architect. And if they don't have an architect, they shouldn't be doing this project, other than the site, because contrary to what the petitioner just said, in the state of Michigan, an engineer can only perform architecture if it's incidental to the project, and an architect can only practice engineering if it's incidental to the project. This is, this architecture is the main part of the project. So this petitioner has brought us information that is not competent, and I cannot make a decision on it. Maybe it could pass, maybe it couldn't, but it's not before me, and I'm not going to support it.
Mr. Goddick?
I'm still looking for an answer from Mr. Twing, or the city attorney, and... Exactly what...
Well, I would say, in reply to your reference in Item C, the proposed use, and the uses that are proposed here are retail, carryout, restaurant, those are your uses.
I guess...
And it's not the site plan.
Right, I guess, I don't know what...
Number one.
Was Mr. Casada just...
Well, can I finish the answer to your question?
I'm sorry.
So number one, it's proposed use is not injurious. So it's, the term use, to me, is how it's being used, not how it's being designed. So I think, from that standpoint, Item C is, are you opposed to retail and carryouts at this location, not are you opposed to where the building sits? In terms of C.
Right, in... Based on the first sentence that you said, I was willing to kind of toss that one aside for the moment, and sort of reference what Commissioner Casada was talking about, the General Building Design 770-30.
Absolutely. If you feel that it's, again, out of character, I would, I would say, why is it out of character, given, and ask you to make clear references as to what needs to change and why you're voting against it. There's no specifics in there. It's an objective standard, or a subjective standard, that you need to articulate more about. It's not something staff can determine.
Mayor?
Yeah, so maybe just looking at this at a 10,000-foot level. You know, certainly I see that this is an improvement to the property. I mean, I like where the stormwater's going. I like the fact that, you know, we're adding nine trees. I guess where I struggle a little bit on the, you know, the building actually facing and being on 11 Mile and being harmonious with the neighborhood, I get that, it makes sense, but I also see the argument, if you look, you know, even from a safety concern and visibility concern, I don't know, you know, the extra traffic that will have to go through the gas station, I don't know what the alternative would look like. And then, it is on the end of where, you know, most of the buildings do front. So there is a little bit of, it's not smack in the middle of 11 Mile Road where all the buildings front. But I guess, where, what kind of tips me in a direction of voting no, goes back to what Mr. Casada is saying with the architectural drawings. I think, you know, if this was a wow building, and I could look at it and say it's, you know, although it's setback, there's a parking lot in front of it, you know, but the look and feel, and, you know, the architectural nature of it, you know, will add a benefit and fits in and ties into the neighborhood, I'd feel more comfortable about approving it. I don't have any issues or exceptions with the parking standards. That doesn't bother me. I know, we do this all the time. People come to the ZBA and say, hey, I have a different use. I need more parking. That's up between you and your tenants. But that's, I guess, where my head's at right now. I think there's a lot of good things with it. It certainly would be an improvement, but I'm curious to see if there's any more discussion that can sway me one way or another. Not including that discussion we're hearing.
Okay, any questions, any more questions for the petitioner, Mr. Twing? Is there a motion?
Well, may I also suggest, you can act upon the plan as submitted, or you could give direction about what you wanted to have changed and brought back to you at a future meeting. Or you can vote to deny it. I mean, you can vote to approve it, deny it, postpone it for more information or revisions. Those are your options.
May I clarify a few things, if possible?
That's up to her.
The issue of the location of the building, if we had any comments of the location, and we are arguing with the planning, we at least will be present in the comments. We don't have an issue to rediscover this. If that's an issue of blocking the approval or something, we can at least address it back to the owner, and of course, we'll come up with a, you know, a solution here. The issue, the other issue with the being architectural engineering, I mean, of course, the previous project, there was an architect presenting also parking. I'm not sure if the issue is incidental between architecture and engineering. I think the issue is either architect or engineer. I mean, even architect can present the site as is. If he has the knowledge, he can design even the structure, if they're comfortable. We've been doing this for over 30 years. We bring in, it's also, it's not like we're trying to just make the building split face block and color day, and just, you know, we gave it some features, so at least it can be as compatible to the area. These issues we can resolve, and if there's any recommendation that the board would like to see, we don't have any problem. If we have any conditions, approve the condition or table it, so we can come back to the board, at least present something that meets the board. We have no issues with those things. Like, we did, as I mentioned, we, the first thing I said to the owner, you got to look down 11 Mile. Buildings are facing 11 Mile. And this, and the design kept going. Of course, where are we going to keep the building? Maybe one two walls, roofing is gone. So there's nothing left, sorry, nothing left from it. So that's why we started looking at Plan B, which is, we presented it. We did discuss that, the location of the building, we did discuss it. We discussed it with the planning, and if the board feels they would like to see something else and take us back to planning, we will do so. We're open, you know, to any suggestions.
Thank you. Ms. Douglas?
Mr. Twing, they can, I mean, if we send them back to the drawing board, so to speak, they can bring back alternate drawings without any penalty or additional fees?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Goddick?
I kind of, just reading into the particular code that Commissioner Casada brought up, General Building Design and Project Compatibility, that I'm under the assumption that we can use to get better developments in our community. And there are half a dozen things that I could read out on that right now to reject this one, but I would like to give the petitioner another shot at this at least. But I would encourage him to read that. And it does speak very specifically to the context of the surrounding area, you know. I'm not necessarily stuck on bringing it right out to 11 Mile Road, but one of the things that we're trying to do in our business areas is not have parking lot in front of building. We're looking at that very intently at 13 Mile and Woodward. We're looking at that very intently on Main Street, north of 11 Mile, and, you know, businesses should be in front of parking in our town as much as possible. And it's done like that throughout 11 Mile. There's, I'd like to see it done with this particular proposal. And there's plenty of verbiage that I could cite in this particular 770-30, and I would encourage our other commissioners to read that.
Are we talking, maybe we can move the building forward about 20 feet and put some parking in the back and the alley, and parking in the front? Sometimes, we don't want to disturb the neighbors. That's why sometimes it's, put all the parking in front. But as we mentioned, as I mentioned, we're open for any suggestions.
Mr. Casada?
Yeah, I just want to be really clear about this. I brought this up a number of times. We're, to follow up on some of the other commissioners' comments, the whole point of the zoning ordinance, and these ordinance, the whole point of this board being here is to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and enhance the value, and the beauty, and the safety, and the sense of place for the city of Royal Oak, so we all benefit from it. If it wasn't for that, we wouldn't be here. And the very minimum standard is to obey the law when it comes to designing the building. So that's, that's number one, is that, what I heard you say is that you're not complying with the law. I don't think this body has to turn a blind eye when we have an engineer doing architecture, we have somebody who's not an architect doing architecture, somebody who's not an engineer doing engineering. That's not going to lead to good design. That's not going to lead to the thoughtful design process and interaction with our departments. It's going to lead to good design and a good city plan. You got, there's a reason why people are licensed. There's a reason why architects are, get more education, training, and testing than anybody but doctors, because it's hard, and it takes a lot of perception, and understanding, and scientific understanding, and design understanding. That's why we require a seal, and the state of Michigan requires a seal, when you hand a document across the table to Mr. Twing's department. If it's an architectural project, it has to have an architectural seal on it. And I'm not going to support any project that I, that I know doesn't have that. I think that the result of following this prescription is that we'll get better designs. We've been very lucky. We've had a whole parade of really good designers, good architects through here in the last few months, and I think we're going to really all benefit from it. But that's, I'm only going to support that. So I guess if you come back with an architect's seal on an architectural drawing, that would be the first place to start.
Ms. Douglas?
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to, Mr. Twing, is it correct to postpone or table? And to what date?
Well, you postpone it to the next meeting, and if he's ready, we'll put it on the next meeting agenda. If he's not ready, then we'll tell you, and it can be postponed again from there.
Okay, that I motion that we postpone it until the next meeting.
There's a motion to postpone to the next meeting. Is there support?
Support.
Was that Mr. Goddick?
Yes.
Discussion on this side of the table?
Yes, you've all figured out where we're coming from on this. Mr. Casada's concerns are a separate issue, but when you talk about the character of our community, I mean, all of the buildings on this stretch of 11 Mile front right up to the sidewalk. And the concerns that a building in that location will hide the gas station have nothing to do with our decision here. So I, we're definitely going to be looking for something brought forward up to the sidewalk. I will add parenthetically, and you probably don't have to do this before the next meeting, but before you, we sign off or get this gets signed off on, we're going to ask you to consult with our city's arborist to come up with trees that are more suitable than Bradford pear trees. And I guess I'll add here, since I have the floor, I have long advocated for a form of zoning that is based not on use, which is what we've stumbled across here, but upon form. Or as I've recently learned another, another way of describing that is character-based zoning in which cities decide how they want their streets and their community to look. And with, within certain use constraints, those are the criteria that you establish for your zoning, form-based or character-based zoning. Now, the City Commission has passed in its strategic plan, so we're in the process. We, as a body, have approved, going forward, with a complete redo of our master plan and, I'm going to assume, our zoning ordinance also. My concern is that that's two years away before we've got even a bite at the, at any sort of form-based zoning. And yet, a temporary fix or a look at some crucial areas where form matters, we could implement some form-based or character-based zoning elements that would protect us in cases like this. I know we don't have that in the budget, but I just fear that, you know, we, as a planning commissioner, are going to be doing stuff like this for the next two years barring some sort of interim measure that gives us some more teeth.
Mr. Casada.
I agree with everything you say except the first part. I just want to be clear, I don't think my concerns are a separate concern. Everything that you want done and everything that this body wants done is best done by people trained to do it, and those are the architects. And if you're going to, you're going to have architectural projects come before this board, they ought to be brought by architects. So it is exactly essential and basic and fundamental to what we're trying to do. It's not separate.
Mr. Goddick.
I agree with Commissioner Douglas's statements about what would work for this particular proposal. And I kind of felt like some of the... That we do have more criteria than we realize when we can apply to building design and project compatibility, when we can be specific about how it fits in with the context of the surrounding area. I also agree with certain sections of what Commissioner Casada talks about that, that a plan has to have the details in it to, that an architect can bring forward in terms of mass and scale and types of materials that would make our decision easier. I don't, I think that we get off on a tangent with that, though, too, in requiring architects bring stuff forward. And the city will not accept a plan unless it has the appropriate requirements for us, so I don't like to get bogged down in that discussion. And if someone proposes that a particular way of bringing plans in front of us is a requirement or they can't look at them, then they can't be objective to making decisions that they should be able to do. So I have a problem with requiring someone to have a certain skill set to bring something in front of us, whether it's the prime contractor, whether it's an engineer, whether it's the property owner. I'm okay with any of that stuff.
Ms. Douglas.
Well, yeah, I mean, we sort of have a face-off here between Mr. Casada's views and the function of our staff. That is, by Mr. Casada's view, the staff would not even consider a proposal that did, a plan that did not come in designed by and certified by an architect. And yet, we have a plan in front of us that is not. Mr. Twing, what are the codes, laws, and standards on this subject that guide your consideration?
Well, basically, the way it's set up is you can, we take anyone that's submitting, because again, it's site plan review and approval. It's not how the building's constructed. That's done by the building department when, when they get, after they get your approval. So they'll have to have the appropriate seals for the construction of the building when they submit that. They'll also have to have the appropriate seals for the stormwater detention when they actually design that. None of those requirements are required to be submitted as part of this activity. You're simply looking at site plan review and compliance with the zoning ordinance. Under that, you can, a seal can be provided by an engineer. A seal can be provided by an architect. And in some cases, other communities let landscape architects and others seal their site plans. We don't. We take them from engineers and/or architects. They can label the building material and design the material. Now, again, we have very limited architectural standards, in my opinion, compared to others, and you've got some criteria that you can rely on to make a determination on this. But from what we accept, they have to be sealed, but it can be an engineer and/or an architect. Again, assuming a project's approved and then they file with the building department, they'll have a whole series of seals on them that are in addition to that. And the engineer that brings the plan in front of you may not be the engineer that brings it in front of engineering or the building department. It may change.
Does the building department require an architect's seal?
Depending on the project and what it is, certainly.
So, all due respect, Mr. Casada, I think that...
It is addressed, it's just, but we, from a planning, site plan, zoning, review, approval, we take an engineer's seal or an architect's seal. Well, that's not what the statute says, but we can talk about that later. That's what our ordinance is, rely on what we require.
We didn't come here to...
But anyways, his plan's been accepted as it's been submitted, as have for the 26 years I've been here, so.
Sir, we have a motion on the table.
No problem. Thank you so much.
Any other discussion on the motion? So the motion is to postpone. It was made by Ms. Douglas in support of Mr. Goddick. Any more comments? Now, seeing we'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say a aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. For this to be moved to the next meeting, or postponed to the next meeting, should the petitioner be ready? Thank you.
Can I highlight some of the items, though, that you want him to address?
Please.
You want, you want more information on the architectural design and details of the building? You want the building location addressed. I understand pushing it to 11 Mile. And you'd like the city arborist to look at trees for better landscape plan?
Yes.
Is there anything else?
I think that's...
Are we satisfied with stormwater?
Stormwater's going to get addressed as part of the engineering submission.
Okay.
Thank you. Next item on our new business, item three is a site plan 170926 to convert a warehouse into business administrative and professional office. Live digital? Live digital? Is that what it is, Tim? And demolish the single-family dwelling to expand off-street parking lot at 302 to 322 East Parent. Mr. Twing.
Again, this is a straight site plan. There is no requirement for a public hearing on... As you indicated, the petitioner is proposing to remove a existing single-family resident-type structure and expand the parking lot into that lot as well as convert the existing building into their office headquarters. The building is some 9,640 square feet. There's no indicated addition to the building, the existing building. At the, at the end of the site plan, if you approve it and it's submitted, they would have 55 off-site parking spaces, including four for the handicap. Under the floor plan that they submitted, they would be required to provide 46, so they're in compliance with that. In terms of the staff review of the site plan, we are looking for them to provide specific details on parcel boundaries, parcel dimension, the building setback, the parking lot setback shall be added to ensure that there's no encroachment into the public right-of-way. Where we're in particular have some question is at the corner of Delaware and East Parent. So we're looking for those additional details to be added. Item B, under that, is the, there's reference in the table for off-street parking of something per thousand square feet, 85%. That's not how it was determined, so we're looking for those references to be removed. C is any exterior door to and from the building should not open into either a landscape area or a parking lot. The one in particular, if you look at the floor plan, there's a door indicated coming out into this landscape area on the northwest corner of the building. All the sheets, as we've been discussing, need to be signed and sealed by a design professional responsible for the drawings. Item two is in regards to the existing building, sets pretty close to the property line. As part of your review and the addition, you would have some determination as to whether or not you have any concerns with that. Item three is, they've submitted a landscape plan. If you're happy with the landscape plan, we're looking for some clarifications on the screening wall and more detail about where it ends, where it drops down to no more than 30 inches to be identified on the site plan. Item four, they're removing approximately 10 trees and replacing that with 17. If you're, again, as a body, happy with the landscape plan, then that requirement can go away, or item four can go away. Item five, six, seven, eight, and nine are the standard contingencies regarding any work in the right-of-way, being compliant with the city engineer requirements, lighting, signage, and then posting performance bonds.
Is that it?
That's it.
Any other questions? Mr. Casada.
Okay, am I missing it? But I don't see the architect's seal on this set of drawings. Did they submit one? That's correct. That's why we had, I had up item 1D.
Anything else for Mr. Twing? Is the petitioner here? Introduce yourself, please.
John Jimbrea, the designer for JJV Design Group. This is the owner, Craig Chablonsky.
Live digital, that's what it is.
Live digital?
Yes, you were correct.
He's the owner and the tenant for the space.
Okay.
Regarding the items, we revised the drawings, which should be there, and these are the sealed drawings here. I think we, I thought we resolved all them with Doug as per what he required.
Okay, any, anything else about the project?
No, just a, I think we're doing a, our plan is to do a major upgrade to not only the interior but the facade of the building to update it and kind of give it a brand-new look that will hopefully suit his use for, they do kind of like networking stuff and...
We're a digital marketing company, so websites, search marketing, social media, think of like a Facebook or Google, that type of office space. So this is, you know, obviously, an old warehouse. It's been there a long time. Great location, we want to upgrade it. Obviously, we're creating a lot of jobs. We're a tech startup that's been around about five years. Have grown to, you know, 35 to 40 employees from two of us. So now it's about time we do a renovation project and build a nice building for our growth.
Okay, any questions for these petitioners? Mr. Casada.
Yeah, I see the drawings.
Any other questions for the petitioners? Okay. Questions for Mr. Twing? Mr. Casada.
Can you tell me who Mr. Echon is? Does he, where's he from?
He's part of the design firm. He works with our partner, John Guma. The licensed architect will be Ed Echen for this project.
And who does he work for?
He's part of our group.
Okay, that's JJ...
JJV Design Group.
JJV Design. Who are the owners of that?
There's me, there's John Guma.
Who gets these?
I think I have to bring those in tomorrow, too.
Okay, so this is the site plan. There's no public hearing. Is there any more questions or discussion? Yes, Ms. Douglas.
Actually, I'm going to move approval of the site plan with the conditions that the staff have specified in their memo, adding a condition, which is that the landscaping plan shall be revised based on input from the city arborist so that it's not a bunch of Bradford pear trees and the selection of trees represents the diversity that we are trying to achieve in our city. Anybody seeing a theme here?
Yes.
We're in full support of that. We plan to make this a very appealing building, you know, for, for the city and for the talent that we attract and well-funded projects. So I think you guys will be very pleased with what we're going to do.
Bradford pears.
Is there support on this motion? Most, Ms. Douglas, support by Mr. Goddick. Any discussion on the motion? Mayor.
Yeah, just say, welcome to Royal Oak. I'm glad to see another business thriving, and I think you picked a great spot. I'd like to see the conversion here of an old warehouse, you know, the business of yesteryears. Clearly, our economy's changing in Metro Detroit and Royal Oak as well, and it's nice to see a repurpose. I like the fact that you're willing to accept the terms that Commissioner Douglas has proposed. I think I'm in a complete alignment. And although with the parking lot there to the right, we are going to lose a couple, a few mature trees, you know, you're growing the tree canopy, which is also important to this community for the next 50 years, 100 years. So I appreciate the effort put behind that, so, thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Casada.
I'm very glad to see that you're interested to come to Royal Oak. I think you'll like it a lot. We'd be happy to welcome you. I'm not going to support your project for the same reason that I had on the last one. The seal is not an architect's seal. He's not an owner of the company who is the design firm. I'm sticking to my guns here. We want a great city. We got to have designers who are licensed and trained and know what they're doing. That goes for this panel. I would advise that to any owner. Get yourself a real architect. Make sure they're licensed. That's my position.
Mr. Goddick, and then Ms. Douglas.
I'll be supporting the project based on its merit and it meets the requirements of our staff and our staff's planning commission. I would like to have a separate discussion about how we are throwing people up against the wall and asking for who they work for and what their architect on staff is. I think it might be a conflict of interest here that, that we're making requirements of someone that doesn't necessarily fit the objectives of this committee. If someone represents architects as a matter of business and they're pushing the architectural... architectural agenda on everything we see and can't vote on particular plans that we see because it doesn't meet that person's criteria, then they, they should step down from this particular board, in my opinion. But that's a separate discussion. I like your plan. I, I welcome you to the city, and I'll be supporting it.
Ms. Douglas.
Well, I, I will point out to Mr. Casada that item one D says, "All sheets shall, shall be signed and sealed by the design professional responsible for their preparation." Does that not?
We haven't seen it, and I...
Doesn't matter, Mr. Casada. Excuse me, uh, excuse me, Ms. Douglas. I think Mr. Twing, our planning director, community director, has made it clear what the city expects from our, from our petitioners. You've satisfied those requirements, and we thank you for that. There's a motion on the floor. It's been supported by Mr. Goddick. Mr. Mayor, did you have a comment?
Nope.
I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome to Royal Oak. Okay, item number four under new business is a site plan seventeen zero nine twenty-seven to reconstruct and expand off-street parking lot for utility service center. It's an AT&amp;T. It's at twelve-ten North Campbell Road. Mr. Twing?
That's correct. They are proposing to reconstruct the parking lot to the rear or east of the building facility. The plan, the survey that's in front of you on the screen, I just wanted to point out that the site plan only comes back to about three-quarters of the way, this fence line. The remainder of the site is, has been indicated as remaining the same. So all the rest of the sheets only deal with the portion to the west of that. And you will see that the, the areas that are planned for resurfacing and, and parking expansion, as well as proposed detention basin in the northeast corner of the site. There is a landscape plan that's been submitted, and you can see the, the material list of materials that are proposed along with that. Far as the staff report, item one is, as I indicated, the easternmost, two-hundred-and-seventy feet of the parcel is going to remain in its present condition. Item two, the depth area of the redevelopment shall be specified on the site plan, addition to the overall lot depth, just to make it clear how far back they're going on the plan. Item three is really your discretion in terms of the landscape plan that's proposed, as well as any of the fencing, existing fencing, fabrics that have been indicated to be replaced on those screening around the site itself. Item four is in regards to the tree removal that the report that we've been asked to put together. No trees would be removed from the area being impacted, and eleven new deciduous trees would be added, along with some thirteen evergreen trees. Item five, six, seven, eight, and nine, again, are the standard contingencies that, in terms of paving and compliance with engineered standards, signage, lighting, and posting performance bonds. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Twing. Any questions for Mr. Twing? Okay, not seeing as the petitioner here? Welcome. Your name, please?
I'm Blake Matei. I'm an engineer. I'm Blake Matei. I'm representing the guy who stamped the plans.
Do, do you have anything to add to your...
I think we're doing a great job. I think we are addressing all the storm sewer issues that were on the site before. We're actually cutting down the amount of pavement that was there. We adding a lot of green, we adding a lot of trees, we adding twenty-five trees altogether. We enhancing the site, there's no doubt about it. It's, right now, it's got a whole lot of gravel in that north, northeast corner, and we taking that out. We're going to be putting detention basin on, over there, just to make sure that we are addressing the amount of release that the city of Royal Oak allows. And other than that, we really, that's all we're doing. We're going to be putting, we're going to be screening the dumpsters. That's another thing that we decided that would be a good thing. So dumpsters right now are out in the open. We're going to be putting them and screening them. Other than that, we increase, the flow's going to be a little better, increasing the lighting on the site, make it a little bit more friendly. This, we are requiring a lot more parking than, than it's required per ordinance, but that's because this is a site where technicians come in, they leave their own vehicles, pick up the work vehicles, hence the amount of vehicle, the spaces that we need. I think that's it.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the, Ms. Douglas?
Who owns the fence along the south lot line?
The owner of the property. So AT&amp;T is, it's leasing the property. I believe the, the fence belongs to the owner of the property.
The wooden fence. It doesn't belong to the, or the apartment building next door. It belongs to the owner of the property.
I agree so.
Okay.
I can't say that for certain, though.
Mr. Twing, do you know who owns that fence?
The way it's indicated, based on their layout, the one fence that's indicated along here, it would be on their property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no other questions for the petitioner?
I'll go.
Ms. Douglas?
Move to approve the site plan with, what do you call it, item number three, requiring them to install a six-foot solid screen, replace the screening wall that's along the south side of the property with a six-foot-high fence, where there is one now dropping down to, Mr. Twing, what's the height, ideal height as you approach?
When you get in, within ten to twenty-five feet of the right-of-way, generally thirty inches.
So within twelve feet of the right-of-way, the fence can drop down to thirty inches, but east of that, it should be a six-foot-high wooden or masonry screening wall.
There's been a motion. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster. Any discussion on this motion? Mayor?
Yeah, I'll just add, I think it's an improvement to the property. Not that the general public can see it, but from, you know, the fact that, you know, you're managing the storm water in a responsible way, not just with detention, but with more green space, more trees, things of that nature. Again, it helps, you know, all the connections we have into the storm sewer, so it is, it's an improvement, and I think it'll be good for your employees, too, for what that's worth, so.
Any other discussion? Not seeing all those in favor say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Aye. Sorry. That's an aye.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. What's that? Uh, Mr. Klooster. Next, this is other business, F-one. This is a sign variance seventeen dash zero-nine dash zero-eight, request to reface the existing freestanding sign for the law offices of Michael Steinberg at three-hundred East Fourth Street, with the variance to allow continued use of non-performing prohibited sign in sign area three. Mr. Twing?
This was an item that was in front of you at your September meeting. You did postpone it to, to allow the petitioner an opportunity to modify their sign. They have done that. The approximate area of the revised sign is twenty-five square feet. The one detail that's somewhat missing from the resubmission is the height of the revised sign. The existing freestanding sign, as we indicated last month, was nineteen feet, two inches. However, and then they're using the same pole. Based on the, the plan that was submitted, it appears that the proposed sign would extend or project out over the public right-of-way, and so we would want to see that modified so it doesn't project over the public right-of-way. As I indicated, the sign is twenty-five feet in area. Freestanding signs in sign area three, again, are prohibited, so this freestanding sign's not allowed.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Twing? Not seeing any, petitioner?
Yes, good evening, Board. Just to clarify, the sign actually is not going to hang over into the right-of-way. Last time we were here, we talked about replacing the existing outdated sign with a new box. And if you look at the diagram, the yellow is the existing sign, the red is the new sign. So it's going to be a completely new box overhanging the grass area, but not over the sidewalk, as previously you had requested or noted.
Well, what was confusing was it says the grass area is forty-eight inches, but the overhang is fifty-five.
Right, but there's also seven inches between the pole and the grass?
Okay.
That's what makes up the difference.
Any questions for the petitioner?
The grass is not in the right-of-way?
No, it's not. The pole actually sits back seven inches from the grass. As I just mentioned, that's what makes up the difference between the forty-eight and fifty-five. And then the fifty-five is at, right at the sidewalk, so the sign will not be over the sidewalk.
My understanding is we're going to, my, Tim's actually going to cut the whole thing off and pull it back so that, pull back the sign till it's not hanging out at all. We're literally going to cut the top off, the, the existing, this one right here, where this all's going to get cut off. That's gone. And once we redo the sign, it will no longer be, we made sure to comply, to take your concerns gravely to heart when you, when you brought it up last time. We want to make sure we're, you know...
So the overall height is sixteen feet?
We're going to keep it the same as the, what the existing one is.
Yeah. Only because the building, we wouldn't clear the building if not.
So you want to be at nineteen feet, two inches? That's what I'm looking for.
Just under, yes, sir.
Any questions for the petitioner? Is there a motion?
Just to elaborate, I guess what you're looking at is a variance to allow a prohibited freestanding sign that is twenty-five square feet in area with a height of nineteen feet, two inches. Those are the variances that are being asked for.
So prohibited sign in nineteen feet.
Yep.
Prohibited in height.
Basically with those dimensions.
Okay. Ms. Douglas?
You had me at prohibited. I'm going to move to deny the variance. Signs are for wayfinding, not for advertising, and occasionally this body will approve a variance when it contributes to traffic flow or ease of drivers finding their destination. That is not the case. The, the petitioner has made it clear that this is an advertising message. Freestanding signs are not prohibited in sign area three. End of discussion.
Motion by Ms. Douglas to deny?
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster. Any discussion? Mr. Goddick?
I, I won't be supporting the motion. We, we tried to give this gentleman some direction last time onto cleaning up the overhang issue and the fact that it was being held together with support pieces from the sides and the top. I think they've made a good effort with, with trying to make an outdated sign fit the area, so I won't be supporting denial.
Any other questions or comments on this motion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion to deny the petitioner, the prohibited sign, and the height, obviously, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
No.
So four to two? Is that right? One, two, three, four? Four to two, four, yeah, four to two. Deny?
Deny.
Deny? Deny? Deny?
Okay, so I just want the Board to know, I'm grandfathered in right now. That sign's going to stay, and you, we can have, we can have the, we can go that way, honestly. I've been a nothing but a good citizen in this town for twenty-six years, and you're wrong when you're sitting there saying that I'm looking to advertise. I need to draw people to come and find my place. I've built it. I have spent thousands of dollars being in this city. So we can go that way. We really can.
Thank you, sir.
Be prepared for legal battle.
Other business, item two, sign variance, request to install, excuse me, sign variance seventeen-ten-zero-nine, request to install freestanding sign with electronic message center for religious institution at eight-fourteen North Campbell Road. Mr. Twing?
That's correct. The petitioner did apply to the building department to install a freestanding sign with an electronic message center. The new sign would replace the existing monument sign that's on site. That includes a manual changeable copy. It also included electronic message center sign, which are only allowed in sign area two. This location is not in that, is not in any designated sign area. Monument signs for institutional uses outside must comply with a maximum height of five feet and a maximum area of twenty-five square feet, with a minimum setback of ten feet. So you've got the variance to allow the electronic message center type sign that's prohibited in sign area two. You've got a waiver of nine feet, nine inches of attention to freestanding sign setback. You've got a waiver of one foot, seven inches from the maximum, six foot, for a freestanding
Any questions for Mr. Twing? Seeing as the petitioner here, please come up and identify yourself.
I'm sorry?
Your name, sir?
Oh, my name's Stephen Schwagel. I am the council president at Good Shepherd Lutheran Church.
Okay.
I have a, I don't know if this would help, but I have a few-minute presentation that probably covers the reasons why we are asking for the variances, if you...
Please.
If I can do that.
Yes, please.
I think it'll answer a lot of your questions, make it a little easier. I am here representing Good Shepherd Lutheran Church as the council president to discuss waiving the variances by which our original permit was rejected. If you give me a couple of minutes, I'd appreciate it. Before I get to the variances, I think it is important to understand the importance of our church to the neighboring community. Good Shepherd Lutheran Church has been an icon in the city of Royal Oak for sixty-seven years, having been built in nineteen-fifty. It has served the community well with some three-generation members, and currently offers many ministries to various groups. We are an active member of the Royal Oak Chamber of Commerce, meeting with them regularly and paying membership fees for this privilege. Good Shepherd distributes welcome bags to new Royal Oak residents. We have a very strong outreach and welcoming pastor, a new council president, and a music director with a master's degree, and owns his own music academy. We operate the Beacon of Hope Food Pantry from our facility, serving as many as seventy Oakland County families monthly, with fresh food and staple items to help meet their needs. Our church provides a safe haven for AA, NA, L-LANON, the Boy Scouts, and Debtors Anonymous meetings, among other groups. I won't mention all the other ministries to be respectful of your time this evening, but they are all involved in serving the community and... but they are all involved in serving the community in various ways. However, with a new sign and attracting more members, we can hopefully expand and be of service to more, which includes our service of visiting the homebound and driving handicapped members to church. Our old sign may have served the church well in the past, but in today's digital world, we need to keep pace if we are to continue to do God's work with the Generation Xs, Millennials, and the young families moving into our city, keeping up with current demographics in our area. I believe the city of Royal Oak is hoping to build a new city hall and police station as you have outgrown this building, and modernization is a priority. We have also outgrown our sign, which no longer allows us to reach out to the thousands of cars that pass our church every day, where a new LED messaging sign will provide us with much-needed exposure. I have personally contacted churches in the area who have recently installed LED signs, and they have unequivocally stated that the attendance at their events and the membership of their, of their church has increased because of the new sign. We are confident it will do the same for us. And I'd just like to discuss the three variances quickly. Waiving the nine-foot, nine-inch requirement of moving the sign toward the church. Our current sign has been in the same position for over twenty-two years and is physically capable of accepting the new sign without any further electrical or foundation work, saving the church finances. We have been raising funds for the sign for eighteen months during the moratorium, and the congregation is anxious to have a new sign. Moving the sign nine feet, nine inches towards the church will make it nearly invisible as we have a large city easement plus a city sidewalk, which totals thirty-seven feet from Campbell Road. If we were to move the sign towards the church, a large, beautiful maple tree, not a pear tree sign from southbound traffic, and trees and shrubbery would block the sign from northbound traffic. The sign in that location would serve us virtually no purpose or may force us to destroy a stately sixty-year-old maple tree that provides shade for outdoor self-help groups and other get-togethers. Variance A, our request is for a slightly larger sign frame being six feet, seven inches. According to your current planning commission, six feet is allowed. We are asking for seven inches more to give the style our church desires. However, the sign itself is still four feet tall and six inches wide. And I think this is key, with an active display area, which is the messaging, the sign that, the area that changes messages. Display area allowable by new ordinances. So we're within that area of the new ordinance that allows for the signs that keep, that change every thirty seconds. This sign would not affect the residents as our current sign is also a lighted sign. The lighted portion faces north and south on Campbell Road, and the residential, residential area facing east is across the large easement in the four-lane Campbell Road. A slightly larger sign would not affect or distract residents or traffic as we have submitted to you a signed affidavit that we plan to completely comply with all the aspects of the ordinance regarding scrolling, flashing, animation, and thirty seconds between changing messages unlike other city LED signs. The new LED sign also has a sensor that automatically dims at night, being less of a distraction for drivers. The larger sign would again allow us to have better exposure from Campbell Road as we are set back quite a distance from the street. Please remember that the active display area is within city ordinances. This last part, which is real short, had me confused. Although I was not sure how to address variance C, I believe when our church first began the process of submitting a permit request, there was a moratorium on LED signs, and our church was formally located in an allowable LED sign area. I cannot humanly imagine how our sign and its location will do anything to detract from that area of Royal Oak and be a nuisance to the residents or a distraction to traffic. If anything, it will add a little class to an older section of Royal Oak and improve our mission and vision of serving the residents of our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the petitioner? I have a question for Mr. Twing. Electronic message center signs that are prohibited in sign area two, where are they allowed?
No, I think they're only allowed in.
They're only allowed in two.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is outside of two. They're only allowed in two. I am sorry. Thank you. Okay.
I don't know for sure if eighteen months ago we were in an area that allowed LED signs, but the eighteen-month moratorium, when we applied, that changed. Now it put us outside that area, but we applied while we were in an LED messaging sign area. I'm not a hundred percent sure of that, but that's what I'm wondering if, if
Can you speak to that, Mr. Twing?
Because it had a delay, we got put outside.
I can't speak to specifically what sign area they may or may not have been in, but you may recall that when the sign ordinance was amended, there used to be four sign areas. And though that was taken down to three in total. And so I think some of the areas that might have been in sign area four were either added to two or, or not. Some were taken out. It's unlikely that if they were in sign area two previously, they were taken out of sign area two, but I can't say for sure.
Okay. Any questions for the petitioner? Is there a motion? Mr. Goddick?
We have to be consistent with our sign ordinance. I'm having a difficult time with this because of the, the good work that this particular church does in involvement in our community. We just denied something on prohibited sign. If this didn't have an electronic sign component, I would be in support of the size and setback issues. But electronic signs are are difficult to manage. Everybody says that they're gonna comply, and not saying that you won't, sir, but our community has a hard time keeping the electronic signs within a thirty-second cycle and without other, other problems. So I, I'll wait to hear from other commissioners on that.
Mayor?
Yeah, so when I look at it, I look at the three variances. I see a practical hardship with the setback requirement. I mean, when you look at the design of the property, you look at the tree, whether you want to use it for wayfinding, advertising, whatever the, you know, prevailing opinion is for one person or another, I think, you know, moving it back would be a challenge. I think it's not really changing the status quo, the position where it is today, so it's not getting worse. So I don't have any objections to waiving the nine-foot, nine-inch minimum require, or the, the ten-foot freestanding setback. For item number A, the, the petitioner said seven inches, or is it one foot, seven inches?
One foot seven is what I have.
Seven? For the height?
My confusion was, is outside of area two, which is the question, I don't know if we were in it or now we're out of it, but outside of area two, it's five, five feet, five by five feet. We are six feet, seven inches. It can, if, if that's a big problem, it can be changed to six feet, which I don't think is asking a lot on foot, considering the distance we are from Campbell Road. The seven inches is just a little scallop, a scallop part that, that makes it look more church-like, if, for lack of a better, but it's not really the frame of the sign, it's just a little scallop across the top that makes it, again, look church-like. So really, it's a foot more of the frame. But then again, the seven inches, which if it's impossible, we can make it a square sign, but like, like the one you see in the picture.
Well, the maximum height allowed for monument signs and for institutional uses outside of designated areas is five feet. Six, seven.
Right. But again, we can make it six feet by removing that scallop part, and, and, and I'm asking for that because of being forty feet from the road, plus there are some city trees along the easement, which you kind of can see in the right-hand corner there. So any more exposure just helps us. That's, that's all I'm asking.
And I don't know if one foot or seven inches or one foot, seven inches makes a, a huge difference to me, given the existing size of the sign. The electronic sign message, I'm always very, very, I mean, we've worked to really limit and prohibit the electronic nature of signs. We've seen them pollute many parts of our community. That's why we took a concerted effort to make sure, you know, we, we addressed it. I think in the section of Campbell, you know, given the fact that other organizations in the community had petitioned a case, I'm thinking of the VFW in particular, for the community elements that, that come with it. You know, I think here in this case, I don't see a significant impediment or harm to the, to the neighbors. I don't see a potential issue of proliferation on this stretch of road, either on, definitely on the east side, or, I'm sorry, definitely on the west side, where the residential units are. It is already illuminated now.
Yes.
I think for the thirty seconds, I mean, we can check up on that. I mean, in the end of the, at the end of the day, if we're getting complaints that the, that the sign is flashing every fifteen seconds or every ten seconds, I feel that's an enforcement issue. And we can come down pretty hard on any institution or business that, you know, isn't complying to that. We can have a rule and then worry that people aren't following the rule. If the rule is there and it's compliant, then I feel comfortable that we can address those complaints. So, I mean, I have, it's not a slam dunk for me, but I think that I'm okay with what's being requested because there is an existing sign there with a similar format, illuminated, and I don't see a significant detraction from it, so.
I, I, as a council president, I can assure you that I will make sure the operator of that sign, who probably will be my wife, who is sitting here, will follow the rules of all the ordinances of thirty seconds, because she will be controlling, God willing, controlling the messages, which will be not advertising, that is church-related, and she pretty much will make sure that's and I, like I mentioned in my lead, there are signs, I have a sign right in the corner where I live, and it changes every eight seconds. Because I sat there and timed it knowing all this. I said, well, they're changing every eight seconds. No, we're gonna keep it to thirty seconds. No animation, no scrolling, no flashing, no, just a nice church sign to reach out to the community.
I have a question. You've, the, they're showing the sign on stilts, and you're also showing it on a monument block. Which is it?
It's gonna be on stilts. It's not gonna be a monument.
It's gonna have two poles coming down, but we're gonna have a cover over it, so it, it will that's just
So it won't look like it's a billboard?
No.
Okay.
No, it'll be, it'll be like that.
There.
Okay, thank you.
And that's the scallop part I told you about on top that adds the seven inches.
Ms. Douglas, use your hand up.
I'm, I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Goddick, meaning sign that is prohibited in a certain sign area is prohibited in a certain sign area. And, you know, I've got to bless you for the good work that you do. We appreciate it. You serve our community well, but, you know, we're, we can't really take that into consideration in these circumstances.
I'm just not, like, like Mr. Twing, if I said it right, he wasn't sure if we were in area two, and now because of the long delay, we got pushed out. I don't know if that, what, I'm not sure. But if we were, then we got pushed out. I just don't think that, that would be, that was fair for eighteen-month delay that I've been coming here and talking with Kevin and, and the planning and researching and making sure everything was, you know, within reason to help our church.
Mr. Casada?
If you look on Campbell Road, there is just
Are we at, on our side of the table now?
We don't have a motion on the table, so.
Okay, but are we, have, are we finished questioning the petitioner?
Any more questions for the petitioner?
Can we make that separation now and make it our discussion, please? Thank you.
Mr. Casada? Although I, do you have a question?
I, not with a question, just a statement. I, I have to say that you mentioned the sign by your house that changes every eight second, and indeed, the reason that there is a moratorium, at least in my view, and the reason they give me heartburn, is because of how they look and how they're operated. You see signs, you see even billboards that are just magnificently crafted, you can't even tell they're lit sometimes. But that's not, those aren't the problem. The problems are, are, are how people operate them, they make them extremely bright, they flash, they look obnoxious. And so I have to say that the petitioner and their good work, which I appreciate, and, and I think is wonderful, and, and keep it up, does factor into this in my mind a little bit, because we've had many people come in here and say, oh, we won't violate the sign ordinance, and they go out and violate the sign ordinance by running quick changes and too bright and all that stuff. I want to say that this petitioner has some credibility with me. So it does bear on my thinking, but I, I, I also, as I just said, the, the messaging signs do give me heartburn, but thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Mayor?
I'll move that we grant the sign variances for SV seventeen, ten, oh nine, A through C.
There's been a motion by the mayor. Is there support on this motion? Not seeing support, the motion fails. Is there another motion? Mr. Goddick?
A motion to deny.
There's been a motion made to deny by Mr. Goddick.
Are you, are you denying all the variances or just electronic message?
I would preface that, thank you, Mr. Twing, that I would deny just the prohibited sign type, that if he wanted to proceed with the the higher height and the setback, that would be my motion, that he could proceed with a sign like that, that was, that did not have an electronic message center.
So your motion is to accept variances A and B and not C?
Yes.
Is there support on that motion?
Support.
Motion by Mr. Goddick, support by Ms. Douglas. Any discussion on that motion? Mr. Goddick?
We're just being consistent. When something's prohibited in an area, it's, it's prohibited. We just had a precedent to that tonight, and we have to, I think when it comes to electronic signs, we have to follow what our ordinance just got designed to, because I've seen other communities to our east in particular that have caused a deterioration of aesthetics to the community by electronic signs being proliferated, so that's the reason for my motion.
May I just say one thing?
No, there's a motion on the, on the table. Any other discussion on this motion? Okay, not seeing, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes. So you have approval for the waiver of the one-foot, seven-inch variance plus the nine-feet, nine-inch setback? And the third item did not pass. So you can work with Mr. Twing and move him forward.
Basically, start with the same sign and that's over.
Thank you. Okay. Next item is sign variance SV seventeen, ten, ten, to request, request to relocate traffic direction sign for professional office building at twenty-six, zero, two-six Woodward Avenue with variance to wave one point five feet from the maximum permitted three-foot traffic direction sign height.
Very simply, the petitioner is proposing to install or replace their entrance sign with a new inner sign that exceeds the three-foot height maximum by a foot and a half or four feet, six inches in total height. On the screen, you can see the representation of the sign they're proposing to be located at the entrance. That's the existing. Both signs are proposing to be lit in some fashion, or the new one is too. That's it.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Twing? Petitioner, please?
I'm Stuart Bloom with Design Build Alternatives. And the client is Support and Associates, and we're responsible for all the architectural design for the previous renovations and the sign work and everything related to that. And if I may, I have some photographs that I'd like to distribute. And if I may, I have some photographs that I'd like to distribute. Although it is still functional, it's been in place since the last renovation of the building. But there's a bus stop that you can see on the cover picture to the left. And just recently, a bench was put in there, but for the last, I believe, three years that it's been in place, the sign has actually been used as a seat. And if you look at the other pictures, there's an intermediate close-up where you can see the nature of the sign. And you can see one end of it coming down, and then there's a close-up of it. The top portion of the existing sign houses the reflective lighting that's inside. But basically, what's been going on is the sign has been destroyed and bent and knocked over probably five or six times. And so, the idea for the replacement was rather to do a conventional horizontal shape to do something that somebody would not sit on or stand on. And the last page shows the drawing, which is essentially the same thing that you've looked at before and is on the screen. And the issue with nonconformity has to do with the height. The actual visual part of the sign is four feet high, which is about this height. The requirement right now is that signs are not to exceed three feet. And then it sits up, you can see the side posts, which are actually integral part of the sign. They're raised up another six inches so that lawn mowers don't hit it and the snow doesn't get up on the sign. It is lit internally with low light. There's a lot of sensitivity to the whole light issue. And we dealt that previously with the main monument sign on the property. So basically, it's just enough light so that the letters glow from the inside. There's no other light. The materials on the sign are bronze-colored. It's all metal. It matches the signage that you can see on the cover picture in the background. So it complements everything. And the position of the sign, I think it changes maybe a foot or so in position to move a little farther, further away from the existing driveway so that when snow is piled, it doesn't hit up against it. That's basically it.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner?
How tall is the existing sign?
Existing sign, I think, is 34 feet, something like that.
So that's just shy of three feet. 34 inches, yes. And the reasoning for the request?
It's because the sign has been destroyed numerous times by people sitting on it, leaning on it, or sitting on it in particular. In fact, you can't see it in the picture. The owners actually wrote on top of the sign, please don't sit on it. This sign was just rebuilt most recently about six weeks ago, and you can see the damage.
The question is, what is the reason for the variance? Give us your reasoning why you, you want it four and a half feet instead of three feet.
Well, if you look at the shape of it, basically, it is somewhat tubular. It's rounded at the edges, flat on the face. It's about this wide.
You'll need to go back to the microphone. It's okay.
All right. The configuration of the sign is about this wide, has rounded edges that are integrated into the sign face. It stands this high. The idea is to bring it up above a height where somebody might be inclined to sit on it, which has been the problem. We thought it was attractive. It complements everything that's there, and it works. And there isn't anything, there isn't any ornamentation on it or anything that anybody is going to want to hang on to.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Is there a motion?
I would move to grant the requested variance.
So, motion by Mr. Casada, support by Mayor Forney, any discussion? Ms. Douglas?
I, I will repeat my case probably every time. Signs are directional. This is clearly a directional need. I mean, it's a squirrely corner. You know, people trying to find your building. You don't want them backing up on Woodward Avenue. This slight variance enhances the visibility of the directional sign and I think serves the public and serves traffic sufficiently.
Any other discussion?
Just add that, because there's the bus stop there. It serves as a practical need in variance. You know, I guess you could put like some other spikes on top of it as a design feature, but I don't know if that's.
There was talk about electrifying it, barbed wire, all kinds of sharp.
Why not just put a bench out for people to sit and wait?
There is now at the bus stop, but I think still probably, you know, if you don't want to sit next to your neighbor waiting for a bus, people will go over there.
What actually happens is in the summer, when it's hot, there are numerous people that come to the building, and there's actually a courtyard area that people hang out in waiting for the bus, which is actually the property.
So there's motion on the table and there's been support. Any further discussion? Not seeing all those favors, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved. All right, item number four, another sign variance, SV 171011, request to install wall signs for medical office at 26454 Woodward Avenue while allowing nonconforming electronic message center to remain with variances to wave 14 square feet from a maximum permitted 21 square feet electronic message center area and wave a maximum permitted 16:9 aspect ratio for electronic message center. Mr. Twing?
The petitioner did submit for the Building Department for a sign permit to install new wall signs. The Building Division, in reviewing the wall signs, said that they were in compliance with the standards under Sign Area 2, except for the fact that the electronic message center on a freestanding sign didn't comply with provisions. So the wall signs that are part of this proposal were in compliance. The freestanding sign with the electronic message center is not. Those are the two variances are related to the existing nonconforming electronic message center. Based on the sign provisions, the electronic message center in this sign area cannot exceed 50% of the sign area or 21 square feet is the max. And that's how that was arrived at. And then B is in regards to the aspect ratio that is maximum of 16:9, which this does not comply with either. So those are the two variances that are in front of you.
Any questions for Mr. Twing? Not seeing any. I'll repeat here from the petitioner, please.
Thank you. Michael Zax, I'm the General Manager at Fortex Signs, 13300 Foley in Detroit, Michigan. What you have before you and what was the original submission is for Detroit Dermatology and Vane Center to put lettering on the north and south ends of the building. We went back after the submittal and had further discussions with both the building owner, the contractor, and the two tenants. RMI is the other tenant in the building. I'm going to hand you out something that shows some revisions that you don't have in front.
Is this new material?
Yes.
I've never seen it.
It is.
This is not part of our proposal tonight?
So what you have in front of you is, after reviewing with the two tenants and the building owners, is addressing the fact that there are now two tenants in the building. So the thoughts were to have a panel on both sides, on the northwest corner and the southwest.
Let me stop you. They can't review something that has not received a denial from the building office.
I see, okay.
I don't know whether this complies, it doesn't comply. They have no material to evaluate this on. They can either postpone action and reconsider next month based on resubmission. But what they have in front of them is the submission that was rejected and then applied for.
Okay.
We can't deal with this this evening.
We asked for, can I?
Well, we can postpone it, but I don't know, I don't know how big these signs are. I don't know. And it's, we haven't noticed it. We haven't done anything with it.
Okay.
This is not what's been given to them as part of their package.
That's correct.
So I think it's a little unfair to ask them to deal with it, frankly.
What's the pleasure of the petitioner?
I'm actually the petitioner. I'm the tenant making, that made the original sign request. I'm Dr. Maureen Cliffel, and that's the Detroit Dermatology and Vane Center. It's my new business.
Would you like us to postpone this?
I'm not sure. I was, when I originally brought the sign petition that you have in front of you, it was, I was told that in order for them to consider signage, I had to have a variance for the current monument sign. And that before they could even consider approval of the exterior signage, that the variance had to be achieved first. So I was under the impression that this, this issue was regarding the variance on the monument sign and not the external signage.
Then we don't need this.
Well, I was just, I mean, we're proposing a kind of a.
They still don't need this.
Okay.
And they're not approving this either, by the way.
No, so my question is, do you want us to address that in two separate?
Well, the way it is, is, I mean, just, the Building Department received the application that was submitted previously and reviewed it, said your wall signs are fine if you get this variance.
Okay.
Okay? So if you get the variance from the electronic message center sign, then you can go forward with what you submitted to the building office.
Okay.
If you choose to alter from that, the building office is going to look at it again and say, do you comply or don't you? And if you don't, you might be back here again. So the question is, do you want to rethink and resubmit as one thing?
As long as the proposed signage is in compliance with the current ordinance.
Well, I don't know. You got, that's got more signage on it than what they've seen here, I think.
Mayor?
Yeah, I think maybe, Mr. Twing, it'd be helpful for the petitioner to understand that, you know, they're not independent. When we look at signage, it's not just the independent signs, it's the whole package. So we have coverage, we have all of these things. So the reason why the monument sign is triggered is because you have, you had a petition here to put a new sign on the side of the building.
Correct.
But there's interplay. So it's important that you have what you want to do, in my opinion. I'm not giving you any advice, but it's not, there, the signing ordinances aren't for individual signs. There are also ordinances as it relates to coverage, how many signs you can have in the building, the size and everything like that. So I'm trying not to give advice here, but I think maybe you can explain it, Mr. Twing, how that works better than I can. So the petitioner understands the next step.
It's really kind of a two-step process. The Building Department, when you apply for a sign permit, if you comply, the Building Department is going to give you your sign permit. If you don't, they're going to tell you what's wrong with it, and then your choice is to correct it or to come here for a waiver.
Right.
And you've chosen to come here for a waiver on the electronic message center sign. And what's in front of the board is the original sign and that electronic message center sign. So they would evaluate it based on that and say yes or no.
Okay.
Okay.
If you want a different sign for the building.
Then we would have to defer to the next meeting, if it's anything other than the one that you have in front of you.
If they blessed it tonight, you could have the signs that were on.
It's both. You're blessing both.
Right, so.
The marquee variance in combination with the, with the sign.
With your proposal.
Okay.
Mr. Godek?
Is your new proposal such that you're going to get rid of the electronic sign?
Well, we, I mean, that could potentially be part of the proposal. We were, we were asking for a variance on the marquee, but in the event.
I just wanted you to drop that other shoe, like the thing that you unfairly laid on us tonight, if that was a proposal to where this monument sign or the electronic portion was going to go away with your next proposal.
It can.
Yes.
It's, it's, it's on, it's on the table. That's definitely something that we would be considering because we're also looking at, I mean, we're looking at making an improvement to the aesthetic, and that could potentially be part of that. Part of the issue with the plan that we've submitted for the exterior signage is dependent on whether or not we get to keep that marquee, because the marquee currently is for one tenant, and it's a two-tenant building, and there's going to be a second entrance. So it's going to become a bigger issue.
What you need to do is go back and decide what you want to submit to this board and resubmit.
If you want this.
This board cannot sit here and go back and forth. They got to have a proposal in front of them that goes up or down.
We need a proposal that we can review in its entirety. We cannot do that tonight.
Well, you can if you want to go back to the original one. If you want to go back to what's been submitted, they can act on it. What they can't act on is this other, whatever, I don't know what it is.
I mean, I know that the sign.
So you guys tell us, do you want us to stop or?
May I?
Well, I.
The builder, building owner and the two tenants, and the two tenants just came to an agreement. I know our LED sign at Fourth and Woodward is one of the signs you guys are talking about. It's always, as issues are going out, when it's daylight, when it's daylight lighting, the computer doesn't recognize it, it's using daylight lighting. In the evenings, there's always repair issues. And after speaking to the two tenants, who are long-term tenants, if we were to go with something, if the board was to approve something like this, so we resubmit, we'd be willing to do away with the LED sign and get it off of Fourth and Woodward, as Mr.
I don't know that you need a variance for that sign if you get rid of that. I don't know, there's not enough detail.
Actually, if the, if the LED sign is removed, we do not need a variance. That's correct.
Then there's nothing to talk about.
Thank you.
My question is, do you want to deny, do you want us to drop this? What do you want to do with this?
Oh, I mean, our, our thing is, because we think with the two signs, it may be oversized, and we may need a variance on that. And in doing so, we would get rid of the light pollution and so forth, and we'd be willing to give that grandfather clause away of the monstrosity.
Mr. Twing, we need a motion to postpone this.
Postpone, or, I mean, postpone or resubmit? Is this within the city ordinance, both these signs?
This is allowed by the city ordinance, yes.
Both of these?
Yes.
Right, but you talked about taking the, the electronic monument and not make it as electronic.
Let me ask, let me ask a real simple question. Are you going to go forward with the Detroit dermatology sign that's on here?
No, sir.
Okay, then, then, then I'm going to suggest you deny this request and they can start over.
Is there a motion?
Motion to deny the request.
Motion by Mr. Kloster. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Casada. Any discussion? Mayor?
Yeah, I think this is, if you're not going to go with, you know, what's presented in front of us, then of course we should deny it. And then, you know, if you have a new idea, then come forward with it. If that new idea incorporates something with an electronic sign or not, whatever you guys decide, if it's complying with our variance, we'll see you for a doctor's appointment and you won't come back here. So, you know, it's a little confusing, but we got to abide by, you know, the ordinances and rules and the policies that this body has to govern by and treating everyone fairly, so.
Thank you.
There's been a motion and support. All those in favor, say aye. Mr. Godek, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say that if it does come back this way and there is no electronic portion of it, I'd be more apt to look at slight variances, as long as they meet the aesthetic and scale of the building.
That's our, that's our intent, yes.
Is there a motion and support? Any more discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to deny is approved.
Postpone, right. Oh, I'm sorry, denied.
Denied, yes. Thank you. Okay, item number five is another sign variance. 171012, request to reface nonconforming and prohibit a roof sign for automobile filling station and convenience store at 31001 Woodward Avenue. Mr. Twing?
As you indicated, the petitioner did submit to reface the sign. The sign design does. of you.
Any questions for Mr. Twing? Not seeing, could we hear from the petitioner?
Sure. Michael Zacks, general manager for the sign, one-three-three-zero-zero Foley in Detroit, Michigan. What you have before you is a petition to reface an existing sign that's been on the building for many years. It's actually integrated into the front fascia of the building, as opposed to being a roof sign. The request is a fairly simple one, they've done some new marketing, and Snackmore is the new C-store on the run, was the original one. So again, we're just asking to reface that existing sign that is integrated into the front fascia of the building, and they did receive a building permit that showed that sign in conjunction with the renovations currently going on. They're going to redrive at the front and put some decorative architectural stone on the bottom to update the look of the station. I have the station operator here, if you have any specific questions about that. Again, the request is a fairly simple one, just changing the copy, actually, on the existing panel, on what we would call a wall sign integrated in that front fascia. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Casada?
I have a question for Mr. Twing, I should have asked it before. On, I, I'm looking at these pictures, and were it not for the starburst above Snackmore, would this be in conformance?
Well, you're, I didn't make the determination, someone in the building did, but I would say yes, if, if all of the signage was below the roof line, then it would not be a roof line and it would comply.
But I, I guess, just to clarify my question, there's already an existing structure here, and is it the starburst? Because it looks to me like the words Snackmore twenty-four are underneath the roof line. So my question is, assuming that they don't take the structure down, if they didn't have the starburst there, would that be a conforming sign?
I don't know, because I don't, I can't see the roof behind it. The roof may be a foot below that yellow, so the Snackmore twenty-four might be above it as well. I don't know.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions for the petitioner? Is there a motion?
I'm going to move to grant the variance.
Motion by Mr. Casada to grant the variance, is there support on this? Support by Mayor Fornay, any discussion? Mr. Casada?
Okay, this is at thirteen and Woodward, and it sits back behind the canopy where the, where the, you know, the stations are for, for fueling. And so it's not, it's not all that visible, and I think that the, the request is a very minor one. And I do think that if, you know, in my opinion, it looks, it looks to me from the picture anyways, that everything verbiage is below the roof line. It seems like a very, very minor variance, and that's why I'm supporting it.
Any other comments? Okay, there's been a motion to approve the variance, support by Mayor Fornay, not seeing any, um, other hands, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Approved.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Next, the meeting schedule and religious holidays for two thousand eighteen, Mr. Twing?
We've just given you our, our standard memo regarding scheduling meetings for two thousand eighteen, in order to put together the deadlines and submissions. We thought we'd get that to you this time, so petitioners would know their cutoff dates and, uh, meeting dates going into January of next year. What we've outlined are potential conflict dates with, uh, religious holidays, and if you wanted to make any revisions, you could do so. If you're satisfied, the resolution at the bottom of the memo is, uh, there for your consideration, if you want to leave it second Tuesday of the month.
Okay, any discussion on this? Mr. Goodeck?
Motion to approve the suggested meeting.
There's been a motion, is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster, all those in favor who approve the meeting schedule for two thousand eighteen, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And then last item is, um, the administrative site plan approvals, Mr. Twing?
Uh, those are for your information, those are just site plans that we've had come through the office and approved.
Okay, any questions on this for Mr. Twing? Okay, so that's just for information, any other business? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Can I ask a question? Yeah, I was, uh, ten minutes late to the meeting. The regular meeting was supposed to start at fif, seven fifteen, I take it it started earlier than that.
Yes.
Because I, I didn't, I, the issue with the zoning text amendments, was that handled before seven-ten, when I got here?
Yes. The brownfield was, um, is, was postponed.
Ah. The, uh, the landscape text, the tree text amendments, I think is what we talked about, not the brownfield.
Right, but the brownfield was postponed, so that moved up the, the tree, do you have questions about that?
I did, I had some questions since I started it, but, uh, you know, I don't know, is, can I make a motion to, to, for a discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we have to reopen.
Okay, can I make a motion to, well, I don't know if I, we want to reopen it, because I don't know what you guys did.
They approved it as submitted.
Motion reopen.
So there's been a motion, reopen, or?
Reconsider.
Reconsider or rescind?
You need to reopen the meeting, so...
Well, the meeting never closed.
We have an adjourned.
Which meeting?
Planning Commission.
But...
No, he's doing the zoning board act motion.
Yeah, he's not talking about...
Motion for reconsideration, which could be done now.
Okay, so Mr. Casada's making a motion for reconsideration of the approval from item...
Actually, I think only a person who voted for it can make that motion.
Aye.
Only those who, only those who, um...
People who were in the majority can make the motion.
Yeah, but two people weren't here.
So anybody else?
Pretty much.
Okay, so, because he was not present as a majority, he cannot make a motion to...
In order to move for reconsideration, you have to be in the, on the winning side.
And he wasn't here to vote, so.
Well, then it has to be...
Somebody else can.
Mayor Chair, Mr. Klooster.
Motion to reconsider.
Subsequent meeting, though.
Okay, so there's been a motion to reconsider by Mr. Klooster, is there support?
I'll support it.
Supported by Mayor Fornay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. I think we can vote on it. Okay.
Thank the committee, thank the, the chair for that. Okay, let me start out with this. What my understanding was about this ordinance was that we have gone from a encourage you to replace trees, to require you to replace trees. But if you don't replace the trees, then we want you to, for whatever reason, we want you to pay some money so we can then plant some trees somewhere else. And we also would like to see a plan, you know, the, a, a tree plan presented to us. But I don't, I didn't, the reason I object is I didn't think that that, the way it was written, would get us there, and I think, I think that what it really says is that, first of all, either has to, if you get into the exception, you either do either-or, you either give us a plan or you give us the money, because that's how I read it. Is that how you guys understand it?
Yeah, if you, if you give us a plan to replace the trees with two trees, then you've complied. If you can't, then you're going to, then you could potentially pay for, or pay into a fund. So it's either-or, it's not both.
It's, it's not, it's not both, you either comply or you give us the money.
Right.
Okay, it's very cattywampus, in my view, the way it's, it's written. So that sort of changed my view of it. What, what I didn't like before was that the only way you got into that situation where we're asking for the money, as far as I could read it, is you had to meet one of those higher standards. You, I believe, or your, your department, or maybe Mr. List, took out some of the language for the standard, and in my view, that actually raised the standard, because before you had three different ways you could get into the exception, and then it was left with only one, so it was harder to get into the one.
Okay.
So what I am suggesting, and I drafted something, if I can pass it out, may I? Because I think this is what is meant, is that if you look at, you got to look at the whole section M, which says, the planning commission gets to look at the landscape plan. If the planning commission decides that the topographical features or the special characters of the site are such that the strict application would, would be less effective, well, that's, we could, that's a ground for us. The, another one is that the public benefit intended to be secured by this section will be, will be achieved if we, if we grant the variance. Okay, that's good, I agree with that. But then, the way it was written, is it then added those exception languages, and, and it sort of broke it off from A and B above. So I think that it should be A, B, C, D, as I've got it, I think, I think that the, the hardship issue should be D, I think it should be above, above the exemptions, then the exemption should say, in my view, it should say, if we grant you the exemption, we want one of these two things. Here's the reasons why we can grant the exemptions, and if we do, you got to give us the plan or the money. And of course, it's a little funny, because the plan, strictly speaking, would be compliance. But I thought you wanted a plan anyways, that's why I put the word otherwise in there. Do you not want a plan anyways?
Yes.
A tree plan?
We do want a tree plan.
Okay, well, then this would, this would, you should put an "and" there instead of an "or."
So you, sorry, Mayor Chair.
Yes.
So you ordered this as you think it should read?
I ordered it the way I think it would affect this body being able to make, uh, grant an exception and then get the money and, or the tree plan in place of it. In place of what, of the strict enforcement. Because I thought that's what was meant.
So your new stuff here is highlighted?
Um, yeah, I did it just the same way that the department did it, uh, I, where, where it's gray, that's new stuff, and it's not my new stuff, that's their stuff, and I'm, I've scratched out the things that, that, you know, I think should be scratched out, and, and I moved it up to number D, or letter D. Because I think that D was, it was a gate before, and if you didn't pass D, you couldn't get into the, get the money. Well, we really, D is really a set of things we're going to consider to grant an exception. We can grant, and we should be able to grant exception for all those things. Is it a better plan? Does it meet the, the purposes of the statute? And might, maybe there's a hardship, maybe even if it doesn't meet the purpose of the plan, maybe if it isn't a better plan, you still can't do it. So it really belongs up, up there. Those are things that we would consider, and then once we make the decision, then we get our, our payoff down there.
It's been a long day.
I agree. That it's been a long day.
Anyway, so I, 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 I don't know what the, the rule is, if you want to look at that and, and maybe if Mr. List wants to look at it.
I think, though, that the only time you're going to grant exceptions, if I'm, I'm thinking out loud, looking at this, the only time you're going to grant an exception is if you've made that determination, right? Let's start simple, right? If you've reviewed, because you're going to get a landscape plan, like you do now, part of, as part of any. The biggest difference was that there was a lot of, uh, subjectivity to that plan, whether you thought it was sufficient, whether you saw it as adequate. Now what we're saying is, in specific, is if you're taking out existing trees, you have to give us a plan of what's being taken out. That's really what's new. Some people gave us that in the past, some people didn't. We asked people to do it, and we're asking more of it. What's really new isn't a new landscape plan. You've always gotten a landscape plan as part of a project. What you didn't get in the past was a clear indication of a plan of what was being removed. Okay? That's probably one of the bigger things on it. So as part of identifying what's removed, the provision is now going to say that you got to put two trees back. And so your landscape plan should, your new one should show that. And if it doesn't show that, then you either have to decide you still accept the plan and move it forward, um, as submitted, because there's something unique about the site, that they don't have to then go pay the money. You've said to them, your plan's good. It's still not, may, may not meet that provision of, you know, if I take down ten trees and I only put fifteen back, but you've decided as a board, that's good for these reasons. They're not going to pay money, too. You're only going to pay money if you determine that there is no unique circumstance, they've only put fifteen trees back, and they got to pay for five. That's the way we wrote it.
All right, that's not, I, I understood to be if we, if we grant you an exception, you're going to pay. Not if we like it, you're going to pay, you're not going to pay.
We're giving you exception, we're, we're, you're going to get a plan that gives you all that information. And if you, as a planning commission, say, you know, you've got a triangle-shaped piece of property and you've done everything you could to meet this provision, we're not going to make them also pay money. That's not the way we wrote it, but if that's the way you want it written, that you've got a good plan, but you still got to pay the money, then you're really not giving them an exception. You're telling them you got to put two trees back plus pay money. There is no exception. You're, you're not giving them relief.
And I think we have to allow for relief.
So that's why we have one and, one or two, so one of the following.
I mean, if it's not clear, I'd be happy to, wordsmith it, but it was written with you, you given the ability to say that plan is wonderful, and then they don't have to pay money. Or you can say the plan's not good and you do.
Okay, well, not to, okay, maybe this needs to be, maybe there's need to be a little working session or something, I don't want to belabor too much. But the way it's written is that they, uh, D one is compliance with K four, K four is full compliance.
No, D one is an exception that we, as the planning commission, have reviewed is okay.
Right, but if you go to K four, K four requires full compliance. That's why, one of the reasons I didn't understand it. So it seemed to me that the only thing, the, the trade-off was we give you an exception and you give us the money. So that's how I read it. That's what I thought the intent was. And I, you know, I'm not on the city commission, they're the ones who gave the direction. I'm just trying to, to make sure that I understand what we're voting on here and what, what the effect is. I mean, we want, if so, we're going to give somebody relief, that is a relief, but if the policy is that if we give you relief, you give us money to plant trees elsewhere, that seems to me that's part of, that's, that's a policy issue.
Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, I can't speak on behalf of the whole commission, but I can speak on, you know, my personal thoughts and maybe where our intent was at the time is, um, you know, if a particular petitioner comes with a project and they can't, you know, they're going to cut down ten trees, okay, and they can only replace three, but the plan makes sense. What we're not saying, we, we can give them relief on the project, to say, okay, you only have to have three trees, but you have to find, you know, an opportunity to plant seven trees somewhere else or pay into the fund so we can replace those trees somewhere else in the city. So the requirement is still ten trees, I guess the relief is that they don't all have to be on your property, and you, you know what I mean?
If that's what is intended, then my language, I think, is better, except you would put an "and" between one and two in D. Yeah, I mean, that's, that, what you just said, Mr. Mayor, is, is what I thought the policy was, was, even though I wasn't there.
Yeah, so adding of the word "otherwise..." Yeah, so adding of the word otherwise.
Right, because otherwise, K4 would be full compliance, what you're going to do is you're going to give us a plan, you know, that otherwise complies. But we already gave you an exception, so we can't make it comply fully with it.
Right.
But then you should say, "And, give us a plan and the money." Because it gotta give you the plan anyways, so you can review it.
Mr. Twing, would you?
Well, I'm going to say that, to me, to me, if you gotta put in two trees for every one removed, or you're going to pay money, then I would eliminate any exception. There's no reason to give an exception. Either you comply, or you comply fully and pay money.
Well, you're complying either by paying into the fund or by putting the two to one trees.
There's no reason to have a, a decision of an exemption.
You would leave that to the, to the petitioner, or are you going to pass it through the board?
You're going to get a landscape plan, you're going to get a plan. A landscape plan is part of your site plan packet that's going to show, and again, a new requirement is everybody's going to have to show what they're taking out, okay? Then you're going to get a new one, and you're going to get a tree, tree count on it. For every tree that's missing, they're going to have to pay money.
So it's not.
That's the end of the discussion. There is no determination of are you in compliance or not.
There's no exemption.
You're just in compliance.
Right, there's no exemption. Either you plant the trees, or you pay into the tree bank.
Right, well, there is no, there's no exception there.
I'll, I'll add one more layer to that, and I, and I think, I don't think it was the intent of the commission, at least in my opinion, to make it an automatic, you know, formula, like you can pick and choose. Because there may be a lot, like, we look at St. Dennis, it had all those beautiful, amazing trees. This was one of the examples we used. And they cut them all down, and, you know, okay, well, we'll just plant some new, small, little maples. We'll cut down the 300-year-old oak tree, and we'll just plant two oak trees somewhere else, or pay $400 into a fund, 200 bucks a pop. So I think there's still that desire that, you know, this body, or, or anybody, anybody, that it may go to, you know, considers the fact that, okay, if it makes sense to clear those trees, you know, that are on the existing property, then there's a mechanism to offset those clearings. But there could be a decision to say, I don't think we should clear those trees. You're looking for variances, you're looking for PUD, whatever it may be that you're coming here for. We want to incorporate these four trees as part of your landscape plan. So I think there, we don't want to make it a formula, we want there to be a decision. If you're coming here for something, you know, a variance of sorts, and we have decision criteria, and the landscaping plan is critical to that, we have some say as far as, nope, we don't like it because you're going to, you know, clear out a forest. Or we can say, you know what, there's some scrub trees on the property, or some unhealthy ones, or whatever, you can get rid of them. But, you know, we need you to plant the same number, or twice the amount, or, you know, pay into a fund if you can't fit it on the property, and that, that's a judgment decision based on, you know, whatever body it's in front of. So I want to make sure we're not confusing that this is a, a simple formula, and we want there to be some discretion.
Well, that, the, what you just described allows the planning commission, or the city commission, whoever's reviewing it, to decide whether the petitioner has to keep the trees or not.
If they're asking for a variance, yeah. I mean, if it's part of the plan is to wipe out all of the trees, we should have a say.
So if they have a site plan that doesn't need a variance, they could still wipe out the trees, though?
Yeah, that's another issue we have to take care of on the private property. But if they're coming here asking for something, trying to seek our approval, just like we grant any sort of variance, we want to use that leverage to make sure we're looking at trees. And if there's something, like a 300-year-old oak tree on the property, we can say, you know, you're looking to, you know, have a, I don't know, a signed variance, or whatever it may be, we want you to preserve.
Special areas.
Yeah, we want you to preserve the oak. You're looking to rezone the property, whatever, you know, we want you to keep that oak tree if you're going to do that. If it's, I mean, if they're, quite frankly, I mean, this is what Mr. Twing has been talking about, at least to us, on private property, whether it's a home, or a business, or whatever, if you're fully compliant with everything, and you don't need to come to this body, or the ZBA, or anywhere else, right now, you can cut down all your trees. There's no ordinances for you to protect. But what we're trying to do is say, hey, if you want something from us, we want to make sure that, you know, we're being good stewards with everything else that we consider.
The way this is set up, it's those that are going to come through are required to have site plan approval. Whether we do it administratively, or whether, whether it comes to this body, the way this is set up is, the city commission has asked you, as a planning commission, because you'll see most of them here. Most of them won't rise to the city commission, but you'll see them here. And so what do you want, as far as that, we're not, this doesn't apply to single-family homes. The other, the other problem a little bit with this ordinance is, if I own a piece of property and I go in and cut every tree down before I submit, there's nothing that keeps that from happening.
Right.
So there's, there's nuances in it, but I, I want to get back to, what was, what we're looking at here was provision that said, for every tree that you take down, again, based on a submission of all the trees you're taking down, their arborist, or their landscape architect is going to say, probably the best one was Normandy Oaks, was Robinson Brothers, so far. They, they gave a, a listing of the size of the tree, the type of tree, and what, what quality, or what, what, how, what they thought its current condition was. So then you can look at it and decide, okay, is it a scrub tree, for lack of a better term, and you don't care about it, and wipe it off the mix, so rather than 20 trees being gone, there are really 15 that you care about replacing, or keeping, as you said. If they can't do that and still meet the plan, then yes, you're going to have to make a decision. Do you let them take them all down? Do you make them keep two or three? And then, for every one of those that are not compliant, is the intent to then, every occasion, make somebody pay for the lack short? Or do you want discretion on that? Because that's going to go back to Mr. Casada's, is it an "and" or is it an "or"? And who has that discretion?
I, yeah, I mean, I think if they're going away, we want to, to, I mean, if they can't put down their property, we want trees. I mean, I, I don't think we want, I think we want to have strict enforcement of the fact that if you're taking down trees, we're going to require you, you know, those trees to be, through an indirect way of compensating the fund, be replaced somewhere else in the community.
Ms. Douglas?
No, I, my question, or issue was.
Mr. Godeck?
I'm trying to stay focused on the "and" or the "or," which is being brought up here. I guess as long as it takes into consideration that, you know, someone might take out 10 trees and just replace five, and want to do pay and replace. So they're going to have to do both things, so.
Well, they should be able to.
Right. That should be the wordage that covers that, so that you can, and the only reason I think you change that is like, I mean, that could almost be a hint, you know, if they have a landscape plan that shows the net tree loss and gain, and how much they're paying in, and they just bring that in with their plan, it's almost an administrative thing. There is no, we don't need a private, private exception. The exception would be if they had to take out a lot of trees, there's a hardship, they can't replace them all, they can't pay into the fund, or something like that, then we might grant an exception. But otherwise, this is almost, to me, administrative.
And that's why I'm asking for some clarity, and is anyone going to be able to get an exception? Or are your only two options, put in the trees that are needed, or put in what you can and pay? Because then there's no exceptions. Nobody's getting off the hook. You're either going to put in 20 trees for 10 that you took out, or you're going to put in 10 trees and pay for the other, there's no exception being granted there then.
Right.
I, I never thought it is an exception. I just thought it was do this, or this.
Well, you're choosing there. I'm not hearing the choice there. Well, then I wouldn't do an "or."
Do you want an exception?
Mr. Casada?
K, subsection, section K requires now, which wasn't there before, it requires the preservation and corporation replacement of existing trees. That's now required. So if somebody gives us a plan, it has to meet all the prescriptions in K, and if it doesn't, then they would have to come before us, no?
Yeah, I mean, if, if they're bringing in a site plan, and they comply with all ordinance requirements, and we can deal with it administratively, it would. If they don't want to comply, or they have issues with stuff, they're certainly going to come here for you to decide.
Okay, so that's, that's right. It's only if they don't comply with K, then they would come before us, and it might be because they have a better idea, and they're willing to pay, or because they can't, or some other reason that we can consider, which is listed here.
Well, let me ask it this way, then. Are you wanting staff to make the determination of, they're taking out 20 trees, they're putting 10 back, they're going to pay for the other? We're going to decide that, or do you guys want to decide that?
That's a city commission issue, I think. That's a policy issue. I'm just trying to get, I'm executing.
Well, I understand, but I mean, that's, it's a, you know, if somebody comes in and says, well, I want to cut all the trees down and pay for them, is that an option that you want staff to have? Because then you're not deciding whether you want to keep four, or three of them, or two of them, or.
I think we need to own that.
Well, that's, that's where I was going to go with it, so I don't.
We, we need to own that.
I don't think we'll be reviewing them in, at the staff level.
No.
I think you're going to see a lot more. Anybody that's taking trees down, you're going to see them.
Good. That's what we want.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
So have we concluded that we can grant exceptions, or this is like either or?
Well, I'm here in either or, but I.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the wording needs to be such that the planning commission, or the city commission, grants the exemption to allow them to pay into the fund instead of replacing the trees.
If we list it as just an option, if we, if we say paying into the fund is just an option towards compliance, then the petitioner can make that decision, whether they cut down all the trees and just write a check. And I'll just, I'll just feed on that. That's a great point, because if you're doing a million-dollar project, you know, what's 200 bucks a tree, you know, I mean, fine, I don't want to deal with this, but maybe, you know, we want to make sure we have a good faith effort to review and work to preserve trees, because that brings value to our community, just like a new development does, so.
Well, why don't, why don't you postpone this over to next month, and we'll take another stab at writing at it? I've got what your comments are. If anybody else has any, get them to us.
I think the, I think the comment that Mr. Kloster just made as far as how to establish the criteria, you know, that we don't give the option to the developer that the exemption to pay in the fund is made by this committee.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I always envisioned it as, you come to us with a plan, and if you can't meet the criteria, we decide if we can use this tool, which is to pay into the fund, to compensate for, you know, a site plan or something that is not, that can't afford to, to keep the same amount of trees on the, on the property. I know, it's getting late, I'm losing my wording here, but.
So, so the ordinance reads, the requirement is to either preserve or replace the trees. And then as a commission, we decide if an exemption is allowed to, if the, if the situation or the circumstances are unique or exceptional, based on topography or whatever, that we can decide that, yes, it's difficult for you to replace the trees or maintain the existing trees, so as a reprieve, you can pay into the fund.
I see a case example of the property has to come into compliance for whatever reason. You know what I mean? They have to put new aprons in, or something like that, that, you know, there's no possible way you could fit more trees on there. Okay, there's a hardship, there's an issue here.
Right.
We'll allow you to pay into the fund as opposed to, you know, forcing a tree that can't fit on the property based, you know, become a compliant.
So I need clarification from our attorney. There was a motion to approve by Mr. Godeck, in support of by Mr. Kloster, which passed. Does Mr. Godeck have to, has, can he rescind his motion?
No.
To allow to postpone?
When you, when you vote to reconsider, it's as if the previous action hasn't happened.
Hasn't happened, okay. So is there a motion to?
Table.
To postpone this?
Postpone. Yes, motion to postpone.
Motion by Mr. Godeck.
Support.
Support by Mr. Kloster. Any further dis, discussion?
I promise everyone that's water.
Any discussion?
There may not be a November meeting, because, but it may hold this in December, then. This is the only item.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? It's been postponed. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second by, motion by Ms. Douglas, second by Mr. Casada, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.